Twenty-three, we would like to begin our superintendent and board recognitions. We will begin with Teacher of the Year recognitions. Ms. Hall, will you come forward?
Good evening, everyone. I'm not feeling the energy. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ah, much better. Okay, this is a super exciting time. We were taking the opportunity, Office of Human Resources, with the superintendent to recognize much long overdue district leaders for Teacher of the Year and Principals of the Year. So I'm going to pass it off to my illustrious sidekick here, Mrs. Allison Lance Brown, who's going to go through the recognition. I'm going to ask the superintendent and VP to step down to recognize folks and take some photos. All right, thanks.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Narcisse, I'm always nervous coming up here if I ever have an opportunity to, to make sure I say it correctly. So I put it together in joint, "Board Members, Honorable, and Dr. Narcisse." That was good? Okay. So, my name is Allison. I have the opportunity and honor to name our Teacher and Principal of the Year District Winners. First, give them a hand already. All right. All right, that's enough. Thank you. Mm-hmm. The first for Elementary Teachers of the Year, and because of the weather, it may be some that aren't here, but we do have a presentation so you can see their wonderful faces. Ms. Kylie Altier, Buchanan Elementary. Wait, when did they give her her flowers?
Oh, oh, wait. Everybody gets flowers.
All right, and next, congratulations, Ms. Brittany Jefferson, Park Medical Elementary Academy. Excuse me.
Who was a student taught by Ms. Bianca Williams. So Ms. Bianca Williams is not thirty.
Oh, wow! You ought to bathe me more nervous. That's my supervisor. Okay, well, it's okay. Don't leave, don't leave. It's, well, you got to get your stuff now. Okay. The next for our Middle School Teacher of the Year Winners, Justin Broussard, Park Forest Middle. He's out in the hallway. He is. Justin Broussard? Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to the next one.
Yes, and the next for Middle School, Ms. Janissa Richardson, Scottlinville Middle. Thank you. You know, I have to make sure everybody gets their flowers while they're here. Ain't that what they say? All right. All right, and Ms., for now, High School, our Teacher of the Year Winners, Ms. Lykow, Baton Rouge High School. And representing Ms. Lykow will be... The Honorable Nan McCann from Baton Rouge High School. Be patient with me, Ms. McCann.
I'm always patient with you.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate it. Don't tell everybody I'm that bad, please. Thank you, ma'am. All right. And the next is Megan Hall, Arlington High for Teacher of the Year. Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'll be the lady, maybe? Oh, my God, this is exciting.
This is a very family-oriented Teacher and Principal of the Year presentation, y'all. But we're so happy for them. All right. Okay. And then... Okay, come on. Justin Broussard, come on down.
And you get a flowers too.
Everybody gets their flowers, right? All right. Doctor, would you like to do teachers and principals together, or just teachers?
Teacher.
Got it.
During this waiting time, while they are getting their medals, shall I entertain everyone with a song? That's what I'm saying. Thank you, board member.
You guys want to come down to join the photo? Come on. HR, come on. You guys did the work. Come on, come on.
I mean, but if you want me to, I... Yes, ma'am.
Step forward, okay, work the forward. There you go, up there, go.
I feel like maybe better. So, because everyone's kind of like the same height.
We can make that happen.
There's tall board members, too.
Just like this, just like this.
All right, should I get her in? Okay. On the count of three. Three, two, one. All right, couple more. If I make it correct quickly, all right. All right, something more. I got it? First, Allison, move on to the principals.
All right. Let's speed through this. And very quickly, but honorably, we have our Principals of the Year. We have up first, Dr. Joy Abernathy Dyer, Villadel Ray Elementary Principal of the Year. That's correct. All righty, and Ms. Vanessa Bloss, Woodlawn Elementary Teacher, Principal of the Year. That's right.
If I can say a quick word about Ms. Bloss, since she, Woodlawn Elementary is in my district, and we are very lucky to have her. She has an outstanding reputation as an educator and a leader in our community, and the work she is doing at Woodlawn Elementary is exemplary. So I just want to say thank you, Ms. Bloss, for her service.
And now for our Middle School Principal of the Year Winner, Dr. Erin Sinclair. Eva Lagarde Center, I'm sorry. You know, oh, wait a minute, HR, wait a minute. All right now, all right. And last but not least, we have Mr. John Hayman, Tara High, High School Principal of the Year.
If I could say, since Mr. Hayman's school is in my district, he's been there a relatively short time, and I know he's bringing tremendous positive direction to that school. I was over there touring and saw a very impressive soccer team, among many others. So thank you very much, Principal Hayman, for all the work you're doing.
Thank you. I had a speech prepared. Can I? Oh.
I just want to congratulate Dr. Dyer. She is the principal in my district at Villadel Ray. Congratulations. We appreciate the hard-working efforts, and keep it up. Thank you.
And I have to add in, for Eva Lagarde getting off the ground for the first year to be Principal of the Year, that's impressive. You did a great job of getting that up and running.
I've never been up there before.
Thank you. As you all return to your seats... As you all return to your seats, I just want to say thank you to all of our Teacher and Principals of the Year. A mic went away. Thank you for all of the work that you do every day for our students and our community. I really appreciate everything that you do, and the best is yet to come because of the work that you do. So God bless you all. We will now continue with a recognition of our VIPs, our Partners in Education, which are our volunteers, and if Mr. Justin Lewis would come forward.
Good afternoon, everybody. I mean, that's a tough act to follow, so I'll do my best, but we're just thankful, I'm Justin Lewis with VIPS, and we're thankful for the opportunity to highlight one of our community partners. Before I introduce her, I just want to give you guys an update on VIPS. We're proud to report that out of six hundred-plus students that was recommended to our programs due to underperforming in reading and in math, VIPS has enlisted over four hundred and thirty dedicated volunteers to tutor these students on a one-on-one basis. These... Can you hear me? Got you. I don't want to mess it up. Can y'all hear me? Is it better? Okay, yeah, so I was...
It's like, it's like church.
What about now?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, perfect, perfect. All right, so now I'm nervous. So, out of six hundred-plus students that were recommended to our programs that are due to underperforming in reading and in math, VIPS has enlisted over four hundred and thirty volunteers to tutor these students on a one-on-one basis. These volunteers spend forty-five minutes to an hour weekly with these students. We've had some amazing feedback from our Principals and Teachers that say not only do they see improvement in the students' performance, but also the joy and excitement on days that their math and reading friends visit them. So it's a great thing that we're doing here at VIPS, Volunteers in Public Schools, and we are, the best way I can put it, we are recruiting daily for more and more and more volunteers. So if anybody's watching, anybody's here that would like to sign up, definitely reach out to us so we can help better serve our students. We also have our Community Partners Program. I'm, I'm sorry, Partners in Education Program, our Community Partners. Those partners are faith institutions, businesses, and social organizations that share their resources to help support our teachers and create an experience for our students. One of those amazing partners are here with us today, Ms. Vicki Garrett, the Director of Louisiana Community Volunteers. Ms. Garrett has been in the nonprofit world with a lot of years of experience, and she wanted to use that to share the love of reading to some younger public school children. So with VIPS, we was able to help formulate an idea that she had of a book club and get that book club up and running at Glen Oaks Park Elementary. So this book club called The First Grade Squad meets weekly to review a book that they've read, that they have read together, and do some hands-on fun activities that is featured in the book itself. Ms. Garrett and the Louisiana Community Volunteers plans to gift the students a copy of the book that they have read this year so they can start their own personal library. So without further ado, I ask Ms. Garrett to join me up here so she can say a few words, and we can all celebrate the success that Louisiana Community Volunteers have had.
If I could just add one piece, because, you know, we value the VIPS partnership so much. The Board, as Board Members and the community may know, we created a literacy blueprint that was about two years, about two years ago when we started in partnership with multiple partners to be at the table, and VIPS was part of that space. And the excitement that we have is what VIPS is doing is exactly what's in that blueprint around how community partners should be helping kids to improve literacy and reading. We were very thankful for that. I just want to make sure you guys, we recognize that partnership for them.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett?
Good evening. Thank you for this honor. I started the program, I thought I was gonna, I moved back to Louisiana nine years ago. I thought I was going to retire, but the need is so great in our communities and with the children, so started the program. So, I hate public speaking, but, but thank you for this honor. I appreciate it so much. And VIPS is such an awesome partner, and we really enjoy working with them. So, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you do, and I, too, tried to retire seven years ago and haven't made that work yet. But the thing about VIPS and the reading program and everything else, you know, the educational aspect of it is very important, the intellectual aspect of it is very important, but the key to me that makes VIPS work is the relationships that they build between the students and the families and the, and the volunteers that are in there. Because it's that personal relationship that really means a lot to these children and really helps them progress as they go through the educational system. So thank you, and thank all the readers, and thank everyone who does that for helping build those personal relationships to really give those students a great foundation. So thank you very much.
Thank you once again to our community partners and volunteering within our schools. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. We will begin our full board meeting at 5:00 PM sharp. Thank you.
Welcome to our regular meeting tonight, Thursday, February 16th, 5:00 PM. We will begin with our invocation. The invocation will be led by School Board Member Mark Ballou and the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Cadet Staff Sergeant Christopher Johnson of Liberty Magnet High School, accompanied by Senior Army Instructor Colonel Retired Jonah M. Hughes. Let us stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you with gratitude for the beauty in our lives. Help us also to show gratitude to others to whom we owe a debt, those who have made sacrifices for us and influenced our lives in a positive way. As we make decisions today that affect our students, our staff, and our community, we ask for your guidance so that we may engage in thoughtful, reasoned discussion, and maintain respect for the dignity with which you have endowed each of us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Narcisse, and the esteemed members of the school board. It is my distinct honor to introduce you to one of my most outstanding JRTC cadets of the Patriot Battalion. Cadet Sergeant First Class Christopher Johnson is a sophomore, and he is in his second year in our JRTC program. He currently serves on our battalion's staff while competing as a member of the Raiders' Challenge Team, Color Guard Rifle Team, Black Jacks, and our Junior Leadership Academic Board. Cadet Johnson has also been here before as to lead the pledge in his freshman year when he won the LET Board One. He is here again as the District's LET Two Cadet of the Year after placing first place in LET Board Two this year. Cadet Johnson has a grade point average of 3.8, and he is striving for excellence. Upon graduating from high school, Cadet Johnson's ultimate goal is to complete his undergraduate degree in criminal justice and then his master's degree also in criminal justice with the intent to become a special agent with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, FBI Agency. Cadet Johnson displays what it means to be a JRTC cadet. We are proud to have watched him grow and mature. Ladies and gentlemen, here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I present to you Cadet Sergeant First Class Christopher Johnson of Liberty Magnet High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the superintendent and the school board, and in recognition of the great work that you're doing, I'd like to present you with this medal.
Thank you.
Are your family here?
Sir?
Any of your family here?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Cadet Staff Sergeant Christopher Johnson, and best wishes to you in your studies. We are now calling this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Just a minute.
District Two, President Lanis. District Three, Vice President Powell.
Present.
District One, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District Four, Ms. Stewart.
Present.
District Five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District Six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District Seven, Mr. Gode.
Here.
District Eight, Ms. Kennison.
Present.
District Nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
I have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving to Item B, Minutes. Number one, meeting minutes. Approval of the school board minutes as of the January 19th, 2023, regular board meeting, January 25th, 2023, special board meeting, and the January 12th, 2023, and February 2nd, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meetings as published in the Official Journal. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by School Board Member Martin and seconded by School Board Member Gode. And are there comments from the board? Okay. Comments from the public in regards to our minutes? Okay. Comments from the board in regards to our minutes? All right, Madam Secretary, let's call for a vote.
Vice President Powell, can we do a roll call, please?
Okay, we will enter into a roll call vote at this time.
District One, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District Three, Vice President Powell.
Yes.
District Four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District Five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District Six, Mr. Russ.
Aye.
District Seven, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District Eight, Ms. Kennison.
Yes.
District Nine, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will move into Alphabet C, information only. First item, monthly financial report. Do we read anything in regards to? Okay, all right. Yes. School Board Member Gode.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight one item as we were going forward. We continue to do very well on our budget, particularly on the revenue side. I don't know if you, none of you were here when we passed last, this year's budget, but we actually projected to have a decrease of $19 million in the budget from the actual of the year before, of what came in actually last year. We projected a decrease of $19 million, and we're actually running ahead of last year. So we're doing very, very well on the budget and our revenue collection, and that's going to bode well for as we come through for the next year's budget to do this. So I just wanted to highlight that we're being very good stewards of the finances and that we're in good shape running into next year's budget.
Thank you. Okay, and any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, moving on to the next item, personnel changes. Any questions or comments from the board in regards to personnel changes? All right, then moving on to number three, public records request monthly report. Any comments or questions from the board in regards to public records request monthly report? All right, then moving to item number four, under information only. Point of information, announcement of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board members who have successfully completed annual training for 2022 mandated by Louisiana Revised Statutes, Title 17, Section 53, and the total credit hours received. Mark Ballou, 10 hours. Darius Lanis, 0 hours. Tramell Howard, 1 hour. Don Collins, 8 hours. Evelyn Ware Jackson, 7 hours. Jill Dyson, 16.75 hours. Mike Gode, 12 hours. Connie Benard, 12.75 hours. And David Tatman, 5.5 hours. The following board members are recognized as distinguished school board members for the 2019-2022 term, Jill Dyson, Mike Gode, and Connie Benard. Congratulations, Mr. Gode. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we will continue. Moving to Alphabet D, receive as information, number one would be an update from our superintendent, Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you so much, Vice President Powell. Super, there we go, okay. Super excited about where we are and where we're going in terms of academic for kids. We're going to talk a little bit about a couple of things, but I wanted to first just do a little bit of recognitions. We're happy to announce, as we get closer to graduation and senior year and kids are getting ready to go to their next level, there are going to be a sense of a lot of scholarships that are coming to a theater near them. So we wanted to recognize tonight one of the partners in that process. We're happy to announce that the East Baton Rouge Parish School System partnered with Orion Laboratories and its CEO, David Slaughter, to award scholarships to two EBR high school seniors that will attend any four-year college or university in Louisiana. The recipients had to meet criteria selected by a committee and complete an application process. The scholarships awarded are in the amount of $40,000 for each student. Let's give them a hand for that. So please join me in welcoming up our two scholarship recipients. Elijah Cage, Arah High School, Elijah. I see Principal John Hayman come up. The other recipient will be Alex Rogers from Liberty Magnet High School. We'd like to thank David Slaughter, Orion Laboratories, and the team for their generosity, and we look forward to our continued partnership and collaboration. I thought it would be good, David, if you were here, or I see Christine Slaughter, if you can come on up, let's give them a hand because we cannot do that without partners, like their generosity. David, it'd be nice if there's anything you want to say, and then we can hold the beautiful checks for our $40,000 for each student. They should have the biggest smile. Yes, and also their parents. Are their parents here? You guys, are your parents here at all? So Mom and Dad, will you mind coming up? Because I always say, you know, the kids that just get here, parents have to raise children to support them in their support. So if you come on up while we take some pictures at the top, and I'll ask the board also, if that's okay, all board members, you know, we always celebrate our young people, we'll take some pictures with them. We appreciate so much that, you know, as all the board says with us all the time, you know, we cannot do this work without the generosity of our community and our partners. And also, I always say to highlight the beautiful smiling faces and also the economic relief scholarships bring to families. So we're excited about those, our students, one more time a hand in Orion. All right, so two more updates. I wanted to give an update on the Reimagine Grant update. I'd like to bring up Dr. Sandra Bethley and Carrie Lawrence for Empower Schools to provide an update on the Reimagine Grant. As many of you may know, the Reimagine Grant was a grant provided by the state for schools that were some of the most successful schools around expansion of those schools in terms of additional seats. And so as we've been working through with the state, we wanted Dr. Bethley to give the board an update. Dr. Bethley?
Okay. Good evening, board members. So I'm going to just give you a little background on the Reimagine Grant. Presenting to you is part of one of our deliverables that we have to complete in the planning stage. So in 2021, the school system applied for the Reimagine Grant. The recipients of the Reimagine Grant are Baton Rouge Center for Visual and Performing Arts, the Baton Rouge Foreign Language Academic Immersion Magnet Program, Capital High School, and Helix Community Schools. Now, Helix Charter School applied for the grant themselves, but the funding flows through our school system. So our mission is to inspire humanity through transformational learning in the classroom and in the community. And with this grant, this is what is going to allow us to continue our mission with our two elementary schools that we are serving. So for Baton Rouge Center Visual and Performing Arts, the previous plan was to transition existing pre-K classes to the visual and performing arts model and to add middle school grades one year at a time. But listening to our stakeholders and community, LDLE approved for us to revise the plan. So with the revisions, we're going to add the pre-K H3 class to Baton Rouge Visual and Performing Arts. We're going to continue with the transition of the existing pre-K H4 classes with the model, and also we're going to add additional seats to the existing grades to serve more students. For Baton Rouge Foreign Language Academic Immersion Magnet Program, it was, the previous plan was similar with adding middle school grades and also doing a foreign language immersion model. But LDLE approved for us to revise the plan, and we will add a pre-K H3 class to flame. We will also transition the existing pre-K H4 classes to language immersion model and add additional seats to the existing grades. add additional seats to the existing grades. So with this budget, with the grant, we had to select a vendor to partnership with, and it had to be a vendor that was approved by LDOE. So through the process, we partnership with Empower Schools, and they had to go through the request for application process, and that's how they were approved. So Empower provides technical assistance to our district throughout the duration of the grant. It manages the overall planning and the implementation phase. It also ensures that our district is on track to meet the grant milestones, and it facilitates the regular meetings and advisory council meetings. So as you look at this slide, it captures our timeline for our deliverables. Like I said before, we have to meet so many deliverables in our planning stage before we go to the implementation stage. So our deliverables included selecting an advisory council, doing a work plan, creating a mission and vision statements, data rationale, our goals, creating an engagement plan, writing an action narrative, and a specific program design. So now, we are kind of almost finished with the deliverables. So we're in the process of planning our long-range goals and also planning our budget for our implementation stage. So what we have, this slide captures what we have completed. We have had our meetings with our two schools. We presented to the school board in September. We've held community meetings with both schools, and we have our second forums that will be coming up in the next two weeks, as you can see on the slide. So our expansion update includes, like, we just finished our advisory council meeting this week. So in March, we are, hopefully, we will be completed with our deliverables. And if all goes well, prayerfully, LDOE will accept our deliverables, and we will move to our implementation stage. In our planning stage, we receive, each school will receive $300,000 for the grant. And in the implementation stage, we're going to receive $1 million for each school. The funding will end September 2024. So this slide captures the expansion timeline for Baton Rouge Visual and Performing Arts. As you can see, the 23-24 school year, I've basically gone over what we're going to expand, but we're going to add sections to kindergarten, first, and second grade. And this is going to allow for us to have at least 130 new visual and performing arts seats. And our location, after board approval, of course, we're hoping to be at Kennelworth Middle. For the 24-25 school year, we're going to add third grade. 25-26, we will expand to fourth grade. And by 26-27, we will have expanded fully to fifth grade. For Flame, for the 23-24 school year, we hope to add 100 new foreign language seats. And we're going to add an additional Spanish section to the first grade. For the 24-25 school year, we're going to include second grade. 25 and 26, we're going to include a third grade. And as you can see on the timeline, so we should be in full expanded with our program by that time. And then all of these expansions will occur at Flame. So this is part of our deliverables, a check, so we have presented to you. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and you can also click on the Reimagine Participant Guide.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bethley. I just wanted to say publicly on how we appreciate both the BRCVPA community and the BR Flame community for giving us feedback as we were working through the Reimagine Grant. When we received the grant, those communities are very involved, as we want them to be, as a part of the work. But expanding more seats, we believe will provide a whole lot more to the school system as those schools, we have actually waiting lists for them. And so I don't know, is the, both principals, are they here? Just wanted to recognize if they're here. Okay, they're probably at parent meetings or something. But let's give them also a hand for their leadership and the work that they're doing. So we're just excited about that. Board member Goday, did you have a question?
Yes, Dr. Bethley, before you run away. You thought you were getting away easy. Just a quick question. I understand BRCVPA, that's on the tax plan for rebuild and stuff. But are we going to be adding 200 seats at Flame? Is there going to be any capital expense associated at Flame for expanding to 100 seats, 200 seats?
No, sir. They will remain at the current location.
They remain at the current location, but will we be, we won't be adding any classrooms or anything at that site?
So our Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Scott Spalding, to answer that.
Good evening, board members. Yes, sir, we will be renovating one portion of the second floor to move the upper-level students. I think the price point is 1.2 million.
But it's a renovation. It's not a, okay.
It's a renovation, correct.
Thank you very much. That's my only question. Thank you.
And I just wanted to speak to the success of at least BR Flame. I've had some of my close relatives, my niece and my nephew, who went through that program. My niece is now in middle school. But what I've enjoyed through her participation in BR Flame is just the idea that she is very much so fluent in Spanish, to the point where she'll be traveling to Costa Rica in a few months. And I believe that it's because of the success of BR Flame. So thank you so much for sharing this information with us.
So the last portion of my report is, as the community knows, we have been working for the last two years on creating what we call our cradle-to-career pipeline work. We have our strategic plan. That cradle-to-career pipeline, we've had, they call six keys that we wanted to make sure that we continue to expand across the school system. One was in early, expanding early childhood seats from the ages of zero to four in our school system. Number two was if you get kids into school early in early childhood, from ages three and four, you actually get them ready for kindergarten. So kindergarten readiness was number two. Number three was getting kids to read at third grade level. And number four was to expose kids to what they call middle and high school transition with exposure to careers. And then the number, keys number five and six is what we call our Pathways to Bright Futures work, where we would get kids not only into making sure they're prepared for the work, but they also were taking advanced courses, advanced placement courses, dual enrollment, and industry-based certification work. So a part of that, what we wanted to do in today's report was to talk specifically around the ninth graders. Because if a ninth grader is not on track, then their chances of success in high school is very limited. So I'm going to call up Dr. Eric Nelson, who's from the Center for High School Success. The Center for High School Success is a group, as you will find out, that has worked with many cities across the country to work with schools across around what they call ninth grade academies, and also to make sure that we're keeping kids on track as they get more opportunity to advance courses into these career pathways. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you. Hello, board. Honored and privileged to be here tonight. Y'all remember being in ninth grade? What that was like? For me, it was very scary to get that locker combination done in the three minutes I had to get from algebra to other classes. And so we know it's much more than that. And in fact, the data shows that it's a super important year. So if we could move forward on the, can I do, can I do that? There we go. So I've got some-
Eric, if you can move up your mic a little bit.
You bet. There's a lot of national data to exhibit why ninth grade is super important, and we'll go through that here. So in that scary time of a ninth grader, it turns out, it's really difficult academically, too. So ninth graders nationally are three to five times more likely to fail a course than any other grade in your academic career. So you got that going against you. GPAs fall in ninth, from eighth grade to ninth grade precipitously. And you think about that transition for you from a middle school where you're kind of known, to all of a sudden, you're at this big high school. So it affects you in all of your core classes and your electives. And then, if you do get an F, you get behind, you don't keep up on your work, all these different risks, some family issues. For every F you get, as a ninth grader, you have 30% less likely chance of graduating from high school. Just one F is 30%. Yet another, another 30%. So it's an absolutely vital grade for high school graduation. And as I mentioned, there's a big change from eighth to ninth grade in a lot of different ways. You go from kind of maybe a smaller school to a bigger school, less transitions to more transitions. And one of the biggest things we see as we work across the country is, as teachers, sometimes we think failure is a motivator. Well, I'm going to give you an F, and that'll make you do your homework more, pay attention in class more. Turns out, that's not true, because those same kids were just three months ago, eighth graders, and now they're at 14, you're trying to treat them like adults. So we really think about what's the mindset that we use for that. So what we measure, and EBR is doing a fantastic job, is what I'm here to tell you tonight, is an on-track metric. And as Dr. Narcisse mentioned, on-track is the measure that we look for for success to graduate from high school. And it really means two things. One, do you have enough credits to graduate at the end of your ninth grade year, a fourth of those credits to graduate? And number two, do you have no more than one F? And for the Project for Bright Futures here at EBR, you get a bonus, because if you're on track, you're already gaining college credit at that time as well. So it's a double wonderful whammy. So, well, why is this important? As Dr. Narcisse mentioned, and the graphic illustrates, if you can end the year with one F or less and you're on track, you have a four times higher likely rate, or chance, excuse me, of graduating from high school. And that is a bigger statistic, a statistic advantage versus race, class, your mobility rate, your prior grades in eighth grades. All those things are kind of indicators of how kids are going to do, that we use a lot of schools. Combine all of those, on-track rate is actually higher predictor of the ability to graduate from high school. So it's a super important metric that we try to follow, and we've been following here in EBR for two years. So over the last two years, there's been a steep, steep increase in the number of ninth graders on track. And it's been a wonderful collaboration between two amazing departments that you all support here and have been brought on in the last couple of years here in EBR. First is, well, Center for High School Success, that's who I work with. Secondly, the Graduation Excellence Department, led by Larry James, Jane Smith, Jane Sylvie, really do a great job of how to best start the pathway in ninth grade with ninth grade academies and move up to a successful high school graduation. Then the Pathways to Bright Futures with Ms. Smith, Ms. Levettino, Ms. Mayweather, do an amazing job with that dual enrollment and keeping you on track to be ready to have those college credits as well. So our three organizations work together frequently. We get together all the time. We're texting frequently to see how we can support schools, and then we partner with each of the schools. So here's the big headline. If you remember, one thing that I said today, along with that silly joke about doing my combination, it's that you're seeing results and results fast in how your ninth graders are doing. So two years ago, right at this time, at the end of semester one, you had 68% of the kids at EBR, of all the high schools, you've got about 2,800 kids that are ninth graders that were at, on track, one F or less. Last year, that jumped to 82%. And this year, we're at 87%, which is an absolutely incredible game, which puts you, Center for High School Success, we're in Memphis, Phoenix, Portland, Indianapolis, a lot of other major urban areas. This puts you already towards the top of that group because of this fast rise and the great collaborative work that you see and leaders that are leading this work. So there's four reasons for success. I'm here to talk a little bit about the strategy that's happening, so you know why this is happening. Number one, there's a very close tracking of data. The GE Group, the PBF Group, their leaders have data in front of them. That wasn't the case prior. So now they know what every ninth grader, what grades they're getting, if they're getting an F in math, why that might be, and they have that in front of them, their teachers as well, and they closely monitor that. On the right in that picture, you can see that's Astru Mahai, Ms. Talbert, who's their team lead. They have that group gets together once a week or every other week to review the data of all the ninth graders, particularly the kids that might be struggling and have one or two Fs. Number two, you've all seen, we've seen a ton more interventions happening for kids. So let's say I'm struggling in math, what do I do? Well, I should probably get a mentor. So you have schools giving mentorship, tutoring opportunities, mental health counseling. The group on the right there in the upper left is Terra High School, and they actually had a group of really successful seniors that were mentoring freshmen. And you think, if you're a ninth grader, are you more likely to listen to a teacher or your peer that's going to help you get on track? Those peers. And so we have several schools that are doing that now as well. Here's the, I think, the biggest slide that you'll see is we see a lot more celebrations and bringing together of relationships of ninth graders. And those strong relationships really create a change in culture at the schools, particularly in those ninth grade academies, and a mindset shift. So it goes from, when we have a strong relationship, remember, can you think of a teacher that you really loved and that loved you back? Most people can say them by name and remember them by name. When you have that, that is the biggest change in your academic success, which gets you to attend more school. That person actually shows that you will come to school more because of that person. And that leads to a higher staff and student engagement, investment in each other. And then, all of a sudden, when you're a kid in a class and you enroll three seat two, you're just that name. But now, you were invested in one in each other, and we see that really changes mindsets about what kids can do for both the adult and the child. And then lastly, we've got a ton of strong leaders, starting with, in the lower left, we get all those leaders, those ninth grade APs together once a month, along with the APCs, who lead the data for the ninth grade PBF. There's Larry James talking to the group a month ago. There's Ms. Mayweather talking to the group as well over at Glen Oaks. And we have a ton of leaders that are just showing that this is important for ninth graders. You got Mr. Wells at Broadmoor is doing a great job. Mr. Stevens at Woodlawn is doing a great job. But I'm going to bring up now kind of the MVPs of two schools that are absolutely crushing it. And given them a little bit of airtime here to tell you about what they're doing at their schools to lead to ninth grade success. The first group that will have come up is at Terra High School. Mr. Hayman, Mr. Rawls, Mr. Robinson are going to come up. Look at these results. So two years ago, forty, only 44% of their kids were on track. Now, at the semester one, only two years later, 91%. That beats a ton of suburban schools. We're going to have them speak, and then after that, we're going to have Belair, who jumped from 75% to 94%, which beats many suburban and urban schools across the country as well. So I'm going to turn the mic, yeah, Belair. Mr. Hayman and group, come on up.
So thanks for that introduction. I do want to introduce our team. We have Mr. Robinson, who's our APC, and Mr. Rawls, who is our administrator over our freshman academy. We also have Mariah Gauz here, who has written a book that she's going to show you in a second. But the slide that was up a second ago, you see that 91% of our students were on track. But what you don't see is that 100% of those students took an advanced course. It was their first time taking either dual enrollment or AP. Many of our students are earning four dual enrollment credits. All of our students are taking an advanced course, and they're 91% on track. But I do want to mention, one thing that we did that was a little bit different with our implementation of our freshman seminar class was, we taught kids college skills through Avid Strategies and used the Avid curriculum, but we also made it a project-based course. And so just yesterday, we had 80 students in that course, 18 groups that produced 18 books, 18 children's books. And so they researched college and career. They researched college and career. They went, they took field trips to the library. They wrote high school-level papers on what they wanted to do, but then they created books for elementary school kids. And so they took that concept, and they had to come up with a story to overcome adversity, come up with a story for younger kids, and now they get to read them to elementary school kids. And by the way, on the 23rd, we're having a project night. You're all invited. We have all-you-can-eat seafood, courtesy of the Lieutenant Governor, so we expect to see everyone there, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock? 5 o'clock at Terra High School. But I want to introduce one of our freshman students, so that she can talk a little bit about it.
Hey, I'm Mariah Gauz, and I'm Miss Freshman at Terra High School. And we've been writing this book for second and third graders, and we had a driving question was, how can young children overcome challenges? And me and my group, like, we just got to thinking about, like, when we was that age and like, what did we have to go through to overcome challenges? And we made this book called The Foreign Twins, and it was basically coming from France to America, and it was very hard for them to adjust because they didn't really speak that much English as much as the other kids. that much English as much as the other kids. So they thought about joining sports, and then that's when they joined sports, they got to starting to fit in, and they made more friends, and they just like got more comfortable.
And if you want to hear how it ends, next Thursday, 5 o'clock.
Mr. Hayman always puts me on the spot, but when Mr. Nelson brought this to us, I told him the first thing that we need to honor is those teachers and the kids that we have at Terra High. It's not us. It's the kids and the teachers that we have. Please come over, we're starting to coin the school the Big T. T-shirts are coming soon.
So you remember English in ninth grade? Were you writing books? Were you doing those type of things? Talk about that engagement, that culture. Next up, let's give a round of applause for the leaders at Bel Air High School.
Good evening, Dr. Narcisse Board members. I'm Verdi Baptiste, Principal of Bel Air Magnet High School. And we were very intentional going into the school year with ninth grade academy. We had worked with Mr. Nelson in just making sure that we built a dynamic ninth grade academy. Our ninth graders are separated. We have a team of teachers, and it's just what Terra was talking about, is the teachers that make ninth grade academy what it is, and intentionally picking those teachers for ninth grade. I always say my ninth grade teachers are transition from eighth, like, they're eighth grade teachers, but they're just in high school. So really great job. Just some points for Bel Air High School. About 65% of our students have earned five or more high school credits at this point. We have over nine PBF dual enrollment and AP courses. We are a esteemed magnet, so we offer elective courses, and 52% of our students are in that. And we also have implemented Avid this year, which has been great through our Quest for Success class, so just being very creative in where that Avid course will come in. We are seeing 5% plus growth on ELA and Math Anet. And that is just, again, the testament to just being very intentional about our ninth grade academy. And then I'll have Coach Wade come up. He is the leader of our ninth grade academy, and it is a team of people. I think sometimes we don't recognize that, but it really is a team. And then also, my Pathway to Bright Futures coordinator, who is awesome, that has been a huge help at Bel Air High School, just getting our data together. Right now, we're looking at pathways and ensuring every student is in their right pathway, and so she's doing a lot of work with that right now. So, Coach Wade?
Good evening. When I sat down with the team, the first thing I said was, kids don't care what you know until they know that you care. So I wanted to place emphasis school-wide for us all to show and display that we cared about the kids. With our strategies, we sat back and we looked at what were the issues maybe preventing these kids from succeeding? That is how we chose the mentors for these particular kids. If it was absenteeism, we used our parent liaison. And if it was a range of 40 to 75 kids on the tier-two status, we basically placed those kids in areas with people that would best suit them. Our intervention strategy was very effective. I've always told Mr. Nelson, I appreciate him allowing us to do what worked best for us, because what worked for us at Bel Air may not work at another school. Our interventions were the biggest, that was the biggest impact on our success and enhancement. I'm very proud, but we have much more work to do, and I'm going to let Ms. Holmes close us out.
Thank you guys so much for acknowledging Bel Air High School. And I do want to say that as a first-year employee at Bel Air High School, and of course, working with Pathways to Bright Futures, we're data-focused, but we're student-focused. And I want to acknowledge the teachers who came out from Bel Air High School and the crowd, and both who are on campus, working with us to individually track each student as a whole child. We're meeting with the students one-on-one to talk about their interests, their likes, their dislikes, in an effort to strategically place them in their pathways. So thank you for having us.
Do you have any of the teachers, is any of the teachers from both those schools here? If you're a teacher from those schools, you stand, we just want to publicly recognize you for your hard work. Let's give them a hand.
And I want to publicly acknowledge and thank those teachers and staff at Bel Air and the principal, as Bel Air is my school, my only high school in my district, so thank you.
So what does this mean? So we can't rest. As Coach said, that 87%, you can only get one F for the whole year. So that 87% can only go down. So we'll be working hard with the team leads, all of those ninth grade administrators to match up mentors. We were learning about the interventions, we were all at Bel Air on Tuesday, and Coach Wade walked us through all of their interventions. So what does this mean down the road? Well, if you're looking at national data, that when your freshman on-track grade goes up, what happens is the graduation rate, it matches it. It'll go up just almost exactly the same. So here you can see, we're not sure what the last couple of years of graduation rates are, but you're probably going to see a big jump when this freshman's class is seniors right now, and you will see a really nice precipitous rise in high school graduation. And then, let's talk about impact. So the last two years, there's been a 19% on-track increase with students like Mariah at Terra. That's 10,000 more future, successful residents that you have right here in the community, right here in Baton Rouge. So what does that mean, though, for them? Well, if you look at the data, lifetime earnings, a high school graduate is going to make, if they work for 35, 40 years, they're going to make $160,000 more. So just that alone is going to make a community impact, and that adds up to $166 million. Just think of that money back in the community of all, and back into the people that make up your community. But then, you're really focused on college readiness and getting kids to college? Look at what that means. For every student that does it, instead of not graduating from high school, but they graduate from college, that means they go from $26,000 a year to $56,000 a year. You add all that up, that's 1.2 million person for every Mariah out there that is a young author now, and that going back to your community is over a billion dollars that you're investing in. So you're making the right investments, sticking it, picking it with ninth graders. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. So let me just, I just want to highlight a few things, because I think it's really important that I share this. You know, I am not surprised about the progress. Everything that we do is by design, right? Providing more opportunity, more access. When I remember starting this job, I walked around particular schools asking questions. We spoke to kids, spoke to teachers, spoke to different folks. And the reality of it is, even the transition report was, the opportunity for kids to do more was not always there, was always there for particular kids. Particular kids is the word I would use, because the reality is, people would believe only certain kids can do well and others cannot. But the fact of the matter, all we've done is provide opportunity and access for all kids. Because we are the brothers and sisters and keepers of all the children of Baton Rouge. Doesn't matter what type of school you go to, doesn't matter what color you are, doesn't matter what part of the parish you live in, doesn't matter socioeconomic. It is so beautiful to see the confidence children have when they begin to succeed. Walk in these schools and go talk to kids. Those ninth graders feel so proud. And so what I, the reason I'm bringing this up is because it's important for us as a community that we continue to help kids identify the goodness that's happening and not all the time that the world is falling apart. Our community is not falling apart. The reality is, we're trying to provide more opportunity for children that did not have opportunity. And so I want to thank the board, as we continue to push our work, the better our school system gets, the better our community becomes. Yes, we have a lot of work to do, but this is just one of many things to come. We're excited also about the number of kids in early childhood. We're also excited that we're going to bring a report about the Pathways work. We have 10,000 high school kids. We only had about approximately 2,000-plus kids taking advanced courses. We now have about 6,000-plus, we'll bring you some of that data. I mean, all of these pieces indicate success over time, and these pieces are not done in isolation. There's partnership with post-secondary universities, both LSU Southern and BRCC, which I'm thankful for. We also have Southwest, some of these other schools. We're thankful for the partners, we have nonprofit partners. There's a lot of investment in the success of kids. And so what I'm hopeful for, as we continue to build this over time, this becomes normal to always be happy about children and their success. And I just wanted to say again, we thank not only all the work the school leaders are doing, but all of the staff. We have 6,000 employees with thousands of other partners in this city that want us to get this right. And it's important for us to keep talking about what is right and what is not wrong in our city. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you, Dr. Nelson, for that work. We're super excited, and the best is yet to come. This is only a starter. We're excited about the progress. And so that is my report. Madam Vice President.
All right. Please don't leave yet, Dr. Nelson. All right, so we have a series of comments here, and if I can share first. First, I just wanted to say congratulations to the two high schools that were recognized, one being one of the former schools that I've worked at. I actually had the opportunity to work at Bel Air High School, I say "back" in the day, because Ms. Baptiste was leading city year at the time. And so, of course, I know that she is now the esteemed principal there, so congratulations to you all. I would also like to ask this, Dr. Nelson, if you could share just a little bit of the data. I know that all of our high schools did not meet the metrics or not meet the quota or the statistics that were mentioned. Could you share a little bit about those schools that still need to meet those levels? I know Scotlandville was one, and I think there was another.
You know, it really comes down to what you've been tasked with dealing with is turnover. What we see, we've had consistently Coach Wade for two years, we've had Mr. Rawls for two years, working hard, building their skills. Where we see, like at Scotlandville and other places, it's at Scotlandville, for instance, we've had three different ninth grade leads this year alone. So that makes a difference, because think if you're a teacher, it's very tough to follow. So that, I think that's the biggest issue, is the schools that are having a hard time with that consistency in staffing.
So thank you for sharing that. So I hope, Dr. Narcisse, and everyone else who is a part of this process, that we'll work together to support those schools that have not met the goal, even if that means that there's a shadowing that needs to take place between schools, so that those schools that are of a similar background or similar dynamic or demographic would be able to grow as well. So I wanted to share that also. The other question that I had was in regards to whether or not LDOE is tracking ninth grade data, and then also, are we tracking data for those who may have been a part of the program, left the program, came back, that kind of thing?
We don't have that data yet. We have met with LDOE, and there are other states that are tracking ninth grade on-track, knowing what an important metric is, as we showed four times. So no, not yet. But that would be the goal, that we would get to that place. And in reference to your prior question, Coach Wade was at Astruma, training the new Scotlandville person on Tuesday, or Monday, no, Friday, sorry, six days ago, helping Coach Whitaker, who's going to come in and work. So we're trying to do exactly what you're talking about. Great minds think alike.
Okay, Mr. Bello?
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and I want to thank everyone from Bel Air and Terra that are here today. I also wanted to recognize Broadmoor High School and the ninth graders there, I know have made pretty significant jump in their on-track percentage. And, Dr. Nelson, you happen to have those percentages? I know it was a big jump.
It was. They were in the low to mid-40s, and they're up into the upper 70s right now as well. So they had a monstrous jump, close to Terra's size jump.
All right, well, thank you.
Coach Lewis?
Dr. Nelson, thank you for, you know, everything that you've presented tonight. Teachers, great job, continue doing what you're doing. And it was so refreshing to see the statistic on-track status as a higher predictor of high school graduation than all the other factors combined. If you can put that slide back up, I don't know if you, but I get so tired of hearing about race and poverty and gender and mobility. It doesn't matter. If you've got children who are in a good school with people who care about them and want to see them succeed, it can happen. All the other stuff is just noise. The data tells the story. Education is data-driven. And when you can bring us this kind of data, then kudos to you. And I would love to see this be the lead story on the top fold of our daily newspaper, our daily newscast, instead of what we normally get. Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome. And I'm going to agree to disagree with you. Race, mobility, those things actually do matter when someone at school knows it matters to you and it's affecting your performance. And so what Coach Wade said, our schools are mentoring them, teachers taking their own time, teachers are so busy, but they're taking groups of five and six students to mentor, to find out what is mobility affecting you? What is it doing? How can I help you? Can I get you extra resources? So they're taking those factors and making them a non-factor because they see, I see you. That's what they're saying to these students.
That's what I'm saying. It's not a deterrent.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison?
Hey, a couple of questions. You mentioned at the beginning, when you first started talking about how, when you first get into ninth grade, how difficult it is, how easy it is to fail. And from what I understand, there's lots of elements to these two things, pathways and whatnot, but dual enrollment seems to be driving the data change. So how does it make sense that if someone is failing regular ninth grade classes, offering them college credit classes makes it so they're achieving more? Like, if you can't pass a ninth grade ELA class, how would you pass a college-level ELA class? And also, second part of the question, like, how is dual enrollment? How does that impact the data? Because these are huge, these are huge leaps, like, that's unheard of, like, so like, are we playing with numbers? Are...
I hear what you're saying. When you can't sleep at 2:00 in the morning, Google this, "Opportunity Myth" by TNTP. It's an educational group, and they did a big study of why school districts do well and why they fail. And this was suburban, urban, 5,000-plus teachers and students. They actually collected lesson plans for a year. They watched classes for a year, they checked assignments for a year. They found the two biggest problems why schools failed, and this gets back to Coach's comments, is number one, the instruction wasn't engaging, it's just boring. Number two, there wasn't a high enough expectation. Those are the two biggest problems across the country, and they said, it's malpractice that we're not doing that. So what you're doing here is by offering that college credit, that opportunity for that, you're doing what TNTP would agree with, is that you're raising the bar that all kids can make, but we're just saying that you're institutionalizing it. And then what the PBF Group, and I'm pouring back here, that they do so well, is then they give it a name, and they give you, and every kid knows where they're at, they know their grade, they know what college credit is, they're moving towards, which is very different from other places. Other places, school is done to kids. What I notice here is kids are a partner in their education, just like you saw this young author here tonight. So it's a really great hand-in-hand that I work across the country that I don't get to see in a lot of other places.
Are there any other comments from the board or questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Let us continue. We're now moving to, we're still in Alphabet D, receive as information. Number two, Council of Great City Schools, English Language Learners Audit Report. This is an overview of the English Language Learners Audit Report. Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you, Vice President Powell. As many of you know, that we have been, we are part of the Council of Great City Schools, where it is about 79 cities that collaborate together across teaching and learning. Mr. Ray Hart, who's their executive director, does here, will talk about the English Language Learner Report. The board commissioned us to have three reports done. At that time, it was HR, Special Education, and ELL. The board has heard the two reports. The board has heard the two reports, which were the HR report, which we've made changes, was an audit that was done. We made shifts based on the recommendations of the council. And then a sped report, we did the same thing. We did an audit, made shifts based on that. And then now the last report is the English Language Learner Report. As you know, this population is one of our fastest-growing population in our school district and also, quite frankly, in the state of Louisiana. And so we need to adjust, and being a part of the council where you have many cities that have this context, the council is beginning to help us with the audit and then best practices. Mr. Hart?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Narcisse, Madam Vice President, and other members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you. First of all, I want to say congratulations on the presentation that we just heard and the performance of the students, particularly in ninth grade. I just want to let you know, and I talked to the gentleman who was here, that we'll be sharing that with the Department of Education in the White House when I return to Washington, DC next week. So congratulations to them, and thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you before I go into the report. This is the third of our reports that we've shared, as the superintendent just shared. I want to thank the staff in particular. We met with staff. We've met with parents. We've met with a number of teachers. In particular, I want to thank the chief of accountability in the district, Andrea Okonski, for all of the support. She's provided a wealth of data, worked, really worked with our staff significantly over the course of the last year. And then also, the staff were the heads of each of the departments that we reviewed. I just want to thank them as well for the feedback and the ongoing support. And we've shared with them over the course of the last year, our findings, and a number of them have already been implemented, and I'll discuss some of that today. In addition to that, as Superintendent Narcisse mentioned, we represent 78 of the nation's largest urban school districts. When we do these reviews, when we conduct these reviews, we don't actually do it as a staff. We, several of our staff members do come in. But what we do is we tap those who are actually doing the work in other school districts around the country to actually come in and conduct the review. So it's a review of practitioners from other districts that are looking at the work that you're doing and saying, "Here are the places where you can make improvements." And so I want to thank the team from Guilford County Public Schools. It was Dr. Myra Hayes and Soladad Lardis Dunst from Guilford County Public Schools who came in and worked with us, and also Dr. Tamara Alsies, who is retired. She also works with English Language Learners or worked with English Language Learners in Buffalo Public Schools. And then our staff, I want to thank them as well. Gabriela Yuro and David Live from the council staff who work with English Language Learners, instructors, teachers around the country. So I want to thank them. We'll go ahead and jump into the report, and I'll open up for questions and answers. But first of all, you will see in the PowerPoint that we will do, I'll do an overview, just kind of a brief overview of what we found, give you some context relative to data. And then we'll talk about our observations, our recommendations, and then we'll open up the floor to questions and answers. So I won't go into detail in all of the findings, but I will provide, and I apologize, this is jumping, but we'll provide just an overview. We looked at the percentage of students by region, and you'll notice that across your regions, the blue bar that you see there is the English Language Learner percentage in the district. The red, the orange bar represents the percentage of students with disabilities, which was a part of our previous report. And then the green bar represents the percentage of students who are on free and reduced-price lunch in the district. In particular, you'll notice that the blue bar is about 15 to 12. 15% is the highest, 11% in southeast, 15% in Broadmoor, and the like. What I will share is that you'll see in a slide coming up shortly that even though there are small percentages of English Language Learners in the district, when you look across all of your schools, about 85% of your schools in the district have an English Language Learner in the building. So even though it looks like a small percentage there, it actually touches most of your buildings. And I'll talk more about what that looks like. So first of all, some of the things that we found. One of the things that really stood out to us is that Superintendent Narcisse, when we came in and did our review, which was about a year ago, recognized the need to build the district's supports for English Language Learners in the district and actually created a, created an office to begin to support that work. That office was new at the time, and we've, our staff has been working with them since they were created to continue to work with your students in the district. So just want to acknowledge that a number of the things that we've recognized here, those staff have already begun to lift up. I mentioned a moment ago about the schools. This gives you an idea across Broadmoor, Sherwood, Highland, and the other regions of the district, where your English Language Learners are and what some of the differences are across some of your buildings. So you'll see that in Broadmoor, for example, there's one building that has 208 English Language Learners. There's another building in that same jurisdiction that has three English Language Learners. But again, want to point out that independent of the number of students that are there, making sure those individual students have the supports that they need, that their teachers have the training that they need to support them is critical, independent of how many English Language Learners are there. But you'll see 14 of 14 schools have English Language Learners in that region. In Highland, Old South, 10 of the 11, and so on and so forth. So it gives you an idea of where the English Language Learners are across the district. In addition to that, a couple of the things that we found were some of the demanding tasks and programs, what it would take to really lift up the supports for English Language Learners were understood by the district overall. And in particular, that office was beginning at the time and has continued to do so, lift up curriculum development and alignment, professional development for the teachers who are working with English Language Learners across the district. They created a team of staff to support English Language Learners throughout the district. And also, over the course of the last year, we've connected them with staff from other large urban school districts in the country to begin to build the expertise that's here in East Baton Rouge from the lessons that have been learned in other districts that have been successful with English Language Learners. Guilford County Public Schools is one example of that. And I can talk more about how and why that has worked. And then finally, curating a set of performance metrics around monitoring ELs has begun, and we're going to talk a little more about that in our recommendations as well. And then finally, establishing that new office was a focus. And so we commend the district on having established that and recognized that coming in. So a couple of other findings, and these are some things that we noted. The first of which is, when we talked to staff about growth and student progress, we didn't hear much about student growth, particularly for English Language Learners around their English language development. So it's one of the things that we shared, one of the things that we looked at in the strategic plan as well, even if it's not a major part of the strategic plan, because we want to limit your goals in order to accomplish them. But recognizing the need for growth for English Language Learners would be important moving forward. In addition to that, the ESL instructional specialists and paraprofessionals had really broad roles in the schools. And quite often, that role didn't allow them to always focus on instruction. And so as you move forward, one of the things that we're going, we lifted up in our recommendations in the report was enabling them to be able to focus on instruction for the students, while some of the other needs, compliance needs, things of that nature, are taken care of in other ways. In addition to that, we saw a lack of district-wide understanding of the curriculum overall and what that meant in terms of supports for English Language Learners. Quite often, it wasn't a discussion about the curriculum itself, but a discussion about the different interventions, like DreamBox or Eureka, that students were plugged into if they were English Language Learners, as opposed to just the direct instruction that we talked about a few moments ago with the teachers that were here in the rooms. That direct instruction for English Language Learners is critical as well. In particular, the last presentation mentioned setting really high expectations for students. One of the things that we discussed, and one of the things that we've shared, is also setting high expectations for English Language Learners. Even though I may not speak the language, English language, it doesn't mean I don't have the capacity to learn. And quite often, it doesn't mean I don't already know the information, just in a different language. So it looks as though I don't have the ability because I don't speak the language. But behind it, I do actually understand how to do the work. So it's making sure that you're ensuring that English Language Learners get high-quality instructional practices as well. So we talk here about instructional practice and the role of teachers, making sure that they understand that those students can access grade-level material along with their peers. On the next slide, we talk a little more as well about a finding that we had regarding how well-defined the instructional program models are to ensure the ELs have access. And I talked about this a moment ago to the core curriculum. So quite often, English Language Learners are pulled out of the classroom environment, particularly during core English instruction, core mathematics instruction, to get English language development supports. But that means they're missing the core instruction. So making sure you're working with them to ensure that they can engage in that, and then providing the scaffolding and the supports so that when they get the core instruction, they can connect. The language is not a barrier for them as they learn English. And the council team didn't hear any descriptions of how content area teachers support ELs. And this one is a critical one. Even though it's a small bullet, it's important. Quite often, content teachers will say, "The support of English Language Learners is really for the EL instructors." So the EL teachers support those students, not me. But if I'm a mathematics teacher, or if I'm an English Language Arts teacher, if I'm a science teacher, it is my responsibility to understand how to connect to those kids as well, but providing the supports that are necessary. So it's making sure everyone recognizes that they are instructors of English Language Learners, just as they are instructors. In a previous report, we shared that all teachers are instructors of students with special ed, who's students with special needs as well. So it's making sure that all of, all teachers in the district recognize the need to support those students. And the last of the key findings were grade-level text. One of the things that we heard as we were going through the review is that there are different texts that are used throughout the district. So some students are able to access the more challenging textbooks, the more challenging curriculum materials, and others are not. So making sure that all kids have access to challenging materials that have been adopted in the district is important. And then not adopting materials specifically to support English language acquisition. So what you want to do is really supplement those challenging materials with the materials that are needed to support English language acquisition. So our recommendations, our recommendations are to explore making modifications to the district's scorecard, and not necessarily, as I shared a moment ago, the strategic plan, although we would recommend it. If you've got a minimum set of goals that you want to focus on in the strategic plan, keep those minimum sets of goals. However, in the scorecard, including all students, so that the growth of all students is recognized as a part of the scorecard and is a part of what's presented to you as a board. So not only for English Language Learners, but students with IEPs as well, and particularly students who are English Language Learners with IEPs. So include time in programs and proficiency levels to understand what that looks like for those students in future presentations. And then task the communications department with accelerating and implementing Objective 2.5, which is providing communications of essential information in dominant languages prior to 2024-25. One of the things, there's two things that's important about this. One is making sure that you're communicating with parents who may not understand, may not have English as their primary language. So making sure that all the members of your community are able to access the information that's pertinent to their children. But the second thing that's really important here, and is one of the things that we found, and that is, quite often, what will happen with English Language Learners or the development of materials in other languages is that the new department that was created would be asked to do everything related to English Language Learners. And what we're specifically saying here is, they aren't responsible for everything related to English Language Learners. Let them focus on instruction. So I mentioned a few moments ago in a finding that they had really broad roles. Well, one of the things that you want to do is have your communications department really lifting up the communications needs of English Language Learners and those families that don't speak English as a first language. You want your research department to lift up the data analysis that's necessary to support the understanding of how those students are progressing. Quite often, what happens is the data analysis will go to that office because there are English, there's the Office of English Language Learners. So they'll say, "You do all the data analysis for that group of students." Or they'll say, "You do all the communications for that particular group of students." That should be a part of the district's purview. And then, secondly, providing professional learning opportunities for district leaders to understand, develop, and understanding of second language acquisition and the role that native language development plays in learning that. There was a presentation made earlier tonight about FLAME and just language acquisition for all students. But this is pertinent for students who are English Language Learners as well. Second thing that's really important about this particular bullet, and I mentioned this early on, and it's why it's a recommendation for all of your district administrators. Remember I mentioned that 85% of your district administrators have English Language Learners or families who are English Language Learners in their building? So making sure that all of them understand what language acquisition looks like and what it means for their students is important. And then finally, creating a coherent series of presentations and activities system-wide to develop all staff's understanding of EL data and research and actionable steps for English Language Learners is critical. Involving the executive director of ESL in meetings in which efforts and the rollout of actions for literacy are discussed. What we learned as we went through the process is, again, quite often, they're excluded from the broader conversations for instruction for students. But as those broader conversations are happening, both for English Language Learners as well as for students with special needs, when curriculum is developed, when teaching strategies are developed, et cetera, they should be a part of the conversation. And then finally, clarify the expected duties and responsibilities of both general and ESL teachers to support EL instruction. So one of the things that I just mentioned in the findings was that quite often, the general education teacher saw the work of educating an English Language Learner as the EL teacher or the paraprofessional's job, not theirs. So making sure that they understand what the joint role is for educating the students. Leading a work group. So this is the ESL director that we're suggesting leads a work group that develops a school support plan based on structure for each school. In the early slide, when I shared data, each of your schools has different numbers of English Language Learners. Some schools, as I'll show you in just a moment, have very high percentages of English Language Learners in the building. Others have very small percentages of English Language Learners in the building. And so the supports for those schools will look very different. So making sure that each of those schools has a plan for how they'll support students is important. And then, as I shared, I'll just, I'll show you the data in a moment. But 18 of your schools have 2,490 English Language Learners, or about 85% of the ELs in the district are in those 18 schools. So the supports for them will need to be identified specifically. And then the data that you see in the presentation and also the data that you see in the report really identify where some of those schools have large percentages of ELs and where those schools have smaller percentages. So you'll see Highland Elementary School, for example, 42%, almost half of the students in Highland Elementary School are English Language Learners. Bar River Oaks, about 37%. And you'll see the changes as you go through. Same for the other middle schools and high schools throughout the district. You can see those middle schools and high schools that have different percentages of English Language Learners. Broadmoor Senior High School, 25%. So one in four students is an English Language Learner in Broadmoor. So just the supports that are necessary to support students as they develop the language, but also continuing to support those students as they get their core instruction is critical. And those are the things that we've provided supports for. We'll continue to do that. We've shared this report with the district as we've gone throughout the year and supported the work that they've done in really growing out the work of the Office for English Language Learners. So with that, I just want to say thank you for your time, and we look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you so much for sharing. I do have a question, and this may be for Dr. Narcisse and his team. So considering the recommendations that have been given, seems like that's ample amount of time. The recommendation that was given is that improvements be made by the school year of 24-25, correct?
It varies. So that one was before 24-25. That was a communications piece. How the superintendent, we didn't stipulate how and what order the superintendent or the district should implement the recommendations. One of the things that we like to do is lay out the recommendations. We will identify some high-level, some low-hanging fruit, if you will, things could be done sooner. But we like the district to say, "Here's how we'd like to address these, and here's how we'll move forward." It's a process. So one of the bullets there, you'll see that I noted lifting up this work is a process. It's a years-long process. So how the district lays out kind of how we're going to address the recommendations we leave up to the district management.
Thank you. So, Dr. Narcisse, what I was going to ask was, is there a plan in place for a work group? And then also, this might be a question for Ms. Hall as well. I know you answered before. I know you answered before as far as ESS, opportunities for teachers to get certified in ESS. Are there also opportunities for teachers to become EL-certified as well? So those were my two questions about whether or not a work group is already in the making. And then number two, you know, if there are certification opportunities.
Yes, so for the academic question, yes, there's a work group that's led by Cesar Rico, who's the head of our EL Rico, who's the head of our ELL. He works under Dr. Robinson, our chief academic officer, that's already working on an action plan. We, once we get a report, we actually start working on it once we hear something. So we can always bring back to the board what the action plan is as well. And then on the other hand, as you heard Ms. Hall say around certification for teachers, yeah, we strongly recommend for teachers to become duly certified in ESS and also in ELL. That is an option that is in our state. As our district becomes more and more diverse, you know, that gives us more of latitude for teachers in terms of hiring around that. The population growth will continue, as I shared before, it's our fastest one. Mr. Rico's in the back can share with you. But, you know, the concern that I have is that we don't wait, we have to do it simultaneously. Being in other districts, I've seen where the districts would wait, and as that population would get larger and larger, then it becomes more of a crisis mode. We have almost about, Mr. Rico's about almost 10 families that come per month, is that correct? And maybe you could come on up, we just, I just want to give a context to the board and the community about how many families we have coming per month that do not speak the language. And also, Mr. Rico, also share what countries they come from. Just to give you a context about Mr. Rico, he's a product of EBR and also is a school leader here. So he can give you from a cultural context as well as he's developing department.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. What I thought of this, but I'm outside of West. Thank you, Dr. Narcisse, and thank you, Board, for this opportunity. As Dr. Hart mentioned earlier, the process in going through and really clearly looking at the needs and where we're at when it comes to the supports for our English learners beginning in 2021-22 school year was a massive one. And from the very beginning, that's, I came in at the exact same time as this was going on, I went ahead and was able to work very closely with Dr. Hart's team. He mentioned Ms. Gabriela Uro, Mr. David, of course, you know, and other members from the different communities throughout this entire country. So real quick, just to get you guys in the context and everything, every single year, the percentages of our English learners grow. It ranges and varies, but we've seen jumps of up to 20%, 30% from one school year to another school year, of course, you know? And then we're up to right now, almost 5,000 ELs. Again, that kind of fluctuates, but it usually fluctuates higher. Most of our English learners are Hispanic, and the far majority come from Honduras, Central America and such, although we do have a big population of Vietnamese, and we do have families as well that we support from Middle Eastern countries and such. So it's a very diverse group of individuals that we're talking about. Again, majority of them are from Hispanic background like myself. I was born in Honduras, in Deosia Alpa. So I came here when I was four years old, and I totally understand exactly what a lot of our kids are going through. When I see these kids, that's my vocation, that's my, that's my desire is to help them because I see myself in every single one of them. Now, Doctor, if you read the extensive document, the long report, it's about, what, 120 pages, something like that? It's very extensive and very detailed. I'm very grateful for it as well because it brought to light a lot of the needs that we need to have here in our district. However, since then, we've implemented several things, like I love what Dr. Narcisse said, we're not going to wait, we can't wait, our kids are too valuable to wait. So ending in the fall of 2022, when they were wrapping up the audit and I was working closely with them and having all this professional development, we went ahead and put systematic approaches to where we can start this process for this school year. So beginning in August, beginning in October, beginning now, we've done things like, one, created a new staffing model, whereas before, we had instructional specialists at schools. That's what Dr. Hart was referring to, as in, oh, it's the responsibility of one or two or three individuals to educate all these ELs in math, science, English, and social studies. That's kind of almost silly when you say it out loud, right? Now we have actual coaches, whereas before, we only had one. We have coaches, 10 of them, to serve our entire district. This is where that professional development comes from. This is where we go in and co-teach with our teachers. This is when we're showing and modeling with our teachers and collaborating in their POCs and such. Also, we created an ESL class, which never existed before. One of the biggest needs that we have, because we have to remember, English learners are not all the same. There's a big difference between someone who's gotten to this country when they were, they just got here yesterday, or they've been here for five years. They can still be an English learner. So what are their needs? Now, our English as a second language, our ESL classes that we've created are for our newcomer and immigrant students. So if you've gotten here, whether it's in kindergarten or whether it's in ninth grade or 10th grade and such, it's very important that we meet you where you're at. We have other English learners, by far the majority, who need to go ahead and be supported in the traditional classrooms. So aside from the ESL classes, we of course created an ESL teacher to support just those classes. So we have coaches, we have teachers now, where we didn't have before, to by far support our kids even more. On top of all that, we actually adopted curriculum, something else we didn't have. So our ESL classes now, we use a National Geographic curriculum. There's two different ones for lower grades and upper grades and such to support them. And then the big thing that we've been able to implement since October, because what we want to do is empower our schools. We want to make sure that every single teacher, or parent, or counselor, whoever the individual at that school is, sees these kids as their kids, right? Just like everybody else was talking about earlier. And as a result, we want to make sure that they understand the strategies needed to help the kids in any type of setting. So one of the biggest things that we've implemented have been our instructional flows. You mentioned Guilford County, right? That team has been instrumental. We just took something that they've been doing for years, and we've begun to implement it here. What that does is, just the gist of it, is that we take our three L strategies, the learning, literacy, and language, and there's six specific strategies with that, and then we take the actual ELA curriculums. So early childhood pre-K, EL education, guidebooks, then we have my perspective for middle school and high schools. We've literally taken every single lesson plan. We've created PowerPoints and new lesson plans with our strategies for every single week of the school year. That's a massive undertaking that our coaches constantly update every single week so any teacher can support their kids in their traditional classrooms. Furthermore, you can take these types of lessons with these strategies and apply them to the amplified curriculums and supports. You can apply them to the UICA math as well, so you can apply them to other subject bases so we can grow this out. So again, the biggest thing that I could say is that we're trying to make sure that all our students are being adequately represented and supported in each of their schools. And if I may, we're celebrating Bel Air and Tara. As you saw the statistics earlier, those are two of our highest English language learners schools. You got Woodlawn, you got Tara, you got Bel Air, of course, and you've got Broadmoor. And we mentioned Broadmoor earlier, and the jumps and leaps that they're making. So these are where our English learners are at, and we're supporting them. We're starting to see the transitions and shifts in education and academics. So sorry, I know that was a lot, but I was really excited to come up here and kind of show you some of the work that we've already been implementing, and the future looks bright for us. If I may, I have just one last thing, I'm done, I promise. All right, y'all gave me a mic, Dr. Narcisse. One of the things that I've seen throughout this country that has been absolutely instrumental, and I think it's a great vision, and these are our next steps, because I would love for you guys to say, what are your next steps? What's next and everything? We're never satisfied, right? And the next steps is our dual-language component. We want our English learners not to lose their Spanish. We want the language acquisition to be learned simultaneously with the content acquisition, absolutely. But we want to make sure that we build pathways and options and opportunities for our English learners to graduate from our schools, to go ahead and be able to speak English and speak their native language. Think about the supports that they'll be able to give to our communities and our businesses around the entire state and the South, if they were able to be capable of doing this. So anyway, I want to kind of throw that out there because the future looks bright for our district.
Thank you, Mr. Rico. As you know, as you can see, he's the right person for the job. Vice President Powell.
Thank you so much for sharing all of those details. It really made my heart leap because being a teacher at Bel Air, I remember 10 years ago where we had an overwhelming number of EL students, both of Hispanic background, also of Middle East background, from areas of Africa as well. And we didn't know how to meet the needs of those students. And so to know that there is a plan in place and there is a process for implementation just makes me so excited. So thank you for sharing that. And then also, just as we mentioned before at a previous meeting, I'm saying on the mic, teachers, go get certified in EL. Come talk to Ms. Hall in her office about getting certified in EL and ESS as well because we need you. Thank you. Mr. Godey.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Dr. Hart, thank you very much for all of the hard work from you and your team. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Narcisse and the staff and all of the members of the East Baton Rouge Parish family. It's not an easy thing to do, to ask someone to come in and put you under the microscope and walk you through all the things and find out where all your warts are and all your birthmarks are and how to go about doing that. But it's a very valuable thing to have done that, and it really helps us lay out a plan. When I first came on this board, I remember going to Highland Elementary, which is in my district, which is your number here, and then the number of EL students there was about 20%. And last year, when I went to Parents' Night, we had to have a translator there to be able to translate to the parents because there were so many non-English-speaking parents there. So just imagine the difficulty we have teaching children whose parents speak English, and then you take a child who doesn't have English as a first language and whose parents can't understand English, and you get to all the homework issues and, you know, all the way through. So it is a big undertaking. And the biggest thing I'll echo what Vice President Powell said, when I first got on the board, we recognized the problem, but our answer was shotgun approach. It was a program here, a step here, do that here. This is the first systematic, since Dr. Narcisse has come and set up his team, it's the first systematic approach I've seen to answering this question that becomes bigger and bigger. And bringing people like Mr. Rico and others into that fold is the kinds of things that we need. So even though we have a long way to go, I don't want it to be lost in the fact that we've made a very good start on it. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Mr. Russ?
So I had a question, but, Mr. Rico, you answered it very well, which was about curriculum. As I read through the report by Great City Schools, and I want to say thank you for putting that together for our district, one of the things that was, the opportunities that was brought up was that there wasn't a clear understanding of what the curriculum was for ESL students. So it seems like our district has already done a great job of acting on those observations. As someone that works primarily with people that have English as their second language, I work with a lot of Hispanic folks in our community, and I'm seeing them raise their children, their families in our community, and they're looking to our public school system for support. And as those kids grow, they become oftentimes more fluent in English than their parents. And that is such a benefit to those families as their kids because they have such a capacity for learning at a young age to pick up one, two, three, four, five languages. And so I want to say I appreciate how important you're placing on them retaining their original speaking language, whether that's Spanish or Arabic or whatever that language might be, because in the workforce, there is such a huge need right now for bilingual individuals, not just in my industry in construction, but in engineering, in STEM fields across the board. We're such a country of immigrants, and as more and more people join our country, we need more and more individuals that are fluent in multiple languages. So that is something that is going to be a huge benefit 10, 20 years from now to our community. So I just want to say thank you for doing this work, and I look forward to seeing, you know, the continued implementation of helping improve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Coach Lewis?
Mr. Rico, never, please, never lose your enthusiasm and your passion for what you do. I doubt if you ever feel like you're getting up going to work. I didn't think so. And also, this is just another piece of the puzzle that, you know, we've been presented with tonight. We've talked about early childhood, we've talked about our ninth graders, we've talked about schools that people kind of, you know, brush aside. All this is, this is, I mean, this district has really grown the last couple of years because there's a systematic approach to everything that we're doing to move this district forward. I think Mr. Godey just, or it was Baloo talked about a shotgun approach. You know, we've put the shotgun away, and we have a strategic plan. All these things are designed to move this district forward. And I've sat in this room and I've heard some very moving conversations around education. Tonight was one of the best I've ever heard. Thank you for what you do, and please, again, never lose your passion and your enthusiasm for what you do.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues on the importance of this area and helping immigrants to our community, our country, become integrated and fulfill the American dream, which is why they all came here. I want to particularly thank Mr. Rico for his passion for what you do for our students. And then, Dr. Hart, I would ask that you pass along to your staff, but more importantly, to the professionals that you gather from other school districts around the country to come and sacrifice their time, time away from their families to come help us do a better job. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, thank you so much, gentlemen. Moving into resolutions, alphabet E, resolutions. The first one is in regards to the National School Social Work Week. In just a minute, we will hear the wording of the proclamation from Mr. Martin, but it is in consideration of a request for the adoption of a resolution proclaiming March 5th through the 11th, 2023, as East Baton Rouge Parish School Board School Social Work Week. So we will hear the proclamation and then entertain a motion.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Vice President Powell. I'm honored to read this proclamation. One of my dearest college friends is a social worker, so I've seen firsthand the valuable work that they do. Whereas school social workers are advocates for access, equality, and fairness, and whereas school social workers strengthen students, expand options, and work to facilitate humane changes in school policies and state legislation that improve the lives of students, faculty, and staff. And whereas school social workers work to change systems and customs that limit the ability of vulnerable individuals and groups to lead fulfilling and productive lives. And whereas school social workers are employed in public schools as positive change agents who dedicate their careers to helping students transform their lives or improving environments that make such progress possible. And whereas school social workers improve the fabric of school systems by caring for those who have been left behind or for those who have lost their voice. And whereas school social workers help students explore new opportunities in the face of serious life changes and challenges. And whereas school social workers believe that each day, they will give a student, a family, or an educator renewed hope in the future. Now therefore, be it resolved, in recognition of professional school social workers and their commitment and dedication through service delivery, research, education, and advocacy, that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Superintendent Dr. Sito J. Narcisse hereby proclaim the week of March 5th through the 11th, 2023, as National School Social Work Week. And joined with the School Social Work Association of America in celebration and support of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Systems School Social Workers in upholding this year's theme, "We Rise." I say move.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, thank you. It has been moved by Mr. Martin and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any comments from the board in regards to this proclamation? Comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public at this time? Thank you. you. Please state your name.
I'm Bridget Webster. Good evening. On Madam Vice President, Powell, members of the board, Superintendent Narcisse, on behalf of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Systems' Mental Health Services Department and our school social workers, we'd like to thank you for considering this proclamation. We are honored to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, any comments from the public? Okay, comments from the board? All right, we will entertain a vote. Please vote. Try to refresh your screen, maybe. The motion carries. Thank you. Moving to our next resolution. Resolution number two, Social Emotional Learning Week, consideration of a request for the adoption of a resolution proclaiming March 6th through the 10th, 2023, as East Baton Rouge Parish School Board's Social Emotional Learning Week, and March 10th, 2023, as Social Emotional Learning Day. And the proclamation reads as follows: EBR SEL Week and SEL Day. Whereas, social emotional learning, SEL, is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. And whereas, SEL competencies develop throughout our lives and are essential to success in our schools, workplaces, homes, and communities, and allow individuals to contribute meaningfully to society. And whereas, SEL can be taught and developed throughout childhood, adolescence, and beyond. And whereas, schools, families, and the wider community must be engaged to enhance the strength, depth, and pace of acquisition of SEL competencies. And whereas, the East Baton Rouge Parish School System supports SEL as a wise use of resources because there are long-term benefits to society from the implementation of evidence-based SEL. Now therefore, be it resolved that in, that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Superintendent Dr. Sito J. Narcisse hereby proclaim the week of March 6th through the 10th, 2023, as EBR SEL Week, and March 10th, 2023, as Social Emotional Learning Day. Therefore, be it further resolved that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board encourages all schools and community members to learn about and share their knowledge of the importance and impact of integrating SEL into our schools, organizations, and communities. If we can entertain a motion, please. All right, all right. Okay, it has been moved by School Board Member Stewart and has been seconded by School Board Member Lewis. Are there any comments from the board? Thank you. Ms. Kennison?
Thank you. I'm glad that some attention is being brought to SEL. But I'm troubled by the resolution because it's only a week and a day. I think it ought to be, I started thinking about it, and I was like, maybe it should be a month, maybe, what if we made it a year? Actually, what if we made it a decade? Because just focusing on social and emotional learning here and there, piecemeal, having a teacher give a student a worksheet to circle the smiley face or the sad face, it's not enough. Social emotional learning, it teaches us to, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I'm still learning to talk on this microphone. It teaches us to understand our thoughts and emotions, to gain a self, a sense of self-awareness, and it teaches us empathy for those around us, for our community, and globally. It's something not just students need in school, it's something all humans need to be successful. Education should be built around that rather than the other way. And on that note, if you don't, if you don't receive that sort of education, you learn, you learn from the people you're around, you learn from the adults as a child, and you, you're shaped by the social and emotional development of the adults around you. I suggest we start with ourselves at the top. We start implementing some sort of, I don't have all the answers yet, but implementing a program for, I mean, for us, like, let's start at the central office and do some social and emotional learning. Like, I, this is, this, since joining this outfit, I've never witnessed so many untruths or been lied to personally in such a tiny amount of time ever in my life. And I'm disturbed by it, but that's not the point. The point is that if we're not taught to be self-aware, to be honest, to know who we are, to love ourselves, we can't teach kids to do that. We can't teach the world to care. So I'd like to suggest that all the staff in EBR be given some social and emotional tools, some learning, some programs, and let it trickle down to the students. And then create also programs, like integral programs, for every subject where we're working on the internal well-being of ourselves. Like, we're not, we're not just robots here to make a worker. Like, we're not trying to turn kids into worker bees. We're trying to make them, help them become good people. And one week is never going to be enough. It needs to be every day for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed forward, is there staff here to accept the proclamation? You may step forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Dupre, Chief of Student Support. I didn't get to meet y'all at the retreat because unfortunately I had surgery that day, but I'm doing great. So it's very nice to meet y'all today. I guess I have a few minutes because we haven't voted on the proclamation yet. I want to thank you for considering the proclamation, and thank you in advance for approving it. I'm going to be positive about it. And I agree, social emotional learning has to start with adults. And I have two of my SEL specialists. Their supervisor, Dr. Bures, is not here today because she's at AASA, presenting to superintendents and school administrators across the nation about the work that we've done with social emotional learning. And if, at Dr. Narcisse's pleasure, I can share that presentation. We're not going to do it till tomorrow, but we can share it so you can see where we are and where we're going. We have social emotional learning in every classroom every day, and these wonderful ladies go throughout the district providing support. We have a social emotional person at every school. It goes through the school counseling department, and we do adult SEL. So, Dr. Narcisse, if we need to have a workshop on adult SEL, you know we'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just simply wanted to share the sentiments of my colleague as well in regards to social emotional support for not only children but adults also. You know, we noticed during the pandemic when all of us were at home, for some of us, we may have enjoyed part of that time, if not all of it. We may have gotten our houses cleaned and other things done, but at the same time, we had never had a time in our lifespan where we were pretty much sentenced to our houses. And we learned how much we needed each other. What I've also noticed is that it's important that we show that we care about each other and that we show true character and integrity in everything that we do. One of my platforms when I was running for this office was to remind people that teachers need support and care and love as well, and to feel valued. And I remember, I shared before, there's a quote that they taught us about in grad school. I don't remember where the quote came from, but if you don't feed the teachers, the teachers will eat the students. And what that simply means is that, you know, if you don't take care of your adults, then whatever attitude they're bringing to the classroom is what will be transferred to the students. And it will affect the student's day, their month, their school year. So it is so important that we provide these services for everyone. I totally agree, Ms. Kennison, with your sentiments about that. And I am super excited about whatever amount of SEL support that we can offer to not only our children but our adults as well. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Vice President Powell. I very much agree with Ms. Kennison's sentiment that education is not just about training worker bees. We talk a lot about workforce development, but that's, that's just a, you know, work is something we have to do to survive in this world. But really, education should be about producing good people. And, you know, there's not just one kind of good person. Good people come in all shapes, colors, genders, religions, political beliefs. You know, there's certainly a fair amount of controversy in the nation about SEL and what it really means. You know, to me, in voting for this resolution, it means to teach kids to care about themselves, to care about others, to have greater emotional awareness about themselves and who they are and why they respond to their environment the way that they do, so that they can all become better people, so that we can all become better people. You know, some claim that SEL is a means to sneak in other philosophies, political, religious, dogmatic, ideological, whatever you want to call it. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, I don't know. But at the level, and I know, Madam Vice President, you and I have had a couple of conversations about this, at the level that you understand it, that I understand it, it's just about what I've just said. And so for that reason, I support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, any public comments? Okay, any additional comments or questions from the board? Okay, please state your name.
Yes, I'm Daniel Lampford from Jefferson Terrace Academy, where I serve as an ESS paraprofessional. I just want a better understanding of what is social emotional learning. I know about it in generalities, but I guess if I could see, you know, someone could like send me a social emotional learning lesson. And also, my concern is, couldn't this take away valuable classroom time from, you know, teaching students reading, writing, math, and the things that they really need to learn in school? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Daniel, and great to see you. All right, returning to comment from the board. If I can ask if you will respond to Mr. Daniel's question. He was asking about social emotional, what is social emotional learning, I guess, so just a little bit more detail.
I'll give you the brief overview because I know we have a timeline. Social emotional learning is about a child, an adult, an adolescent, learning how to be their best selves, how to get along with each other, how to control their emotions, how to meet the goals in their life that they want to meet. It's about being a good, well-rounded citizen. And it's the skills that any person needs in order to be a success. And I think that pretty much sums up what it is. For lessons, we have a platform that we use called RethinkEd, and we can have one of our SEL specialists to go and meet and show, this gentleman, if so deemed, what the lessons look like. And the lessons cover from kindergarten, pre-K, all the way up. And it also has standards for ESS and SEL students, so that if they need, not SEL, ELL students, excuse me, ELL students, so if they need adjusted lessons, they're there. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Okay, if we can entertain a vote, please. Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. Now moving to resolution number three, Black History Month, consideration of a request for the adoption of a resolution proclaiming February as Black History Month. Ms. Stewart, if you will read the proclamation for us.
East Baton Rouge Parish School Board Resolution, whereas our nation was founded on the percepts that we all were created equal in merit, that we all should be treated with equal dignity in our lives. Whereas, in the face of injustices, people of goodwill from all origins in the United States have distinguished themselves with a commitment to the noble ideals on which our country was founded, and have fought for the rights and freedoms of African Americans and others. Whereas, Black History Month originated in 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set out to recognize the heritage and achievement of Black people in the United States. Since that time, our country commemorates and celebrates the contributions of African Americans annually during the month of February. Whereas, the theme of Black History Month for 2023 focuses on the deep commitment to advancing equity, justice, access, and opportunity for African Americans as we continue to strive for our country's founding pledge. Whereas, the contributions of African Americans from all walks of life throughout the history of the United States reflects the greatness of our nation. Whereas, African Americans continue to serve the United States at the highest levels of business, education, government, and the military. Be it resolved, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board agrees that Black History Month is vital and should be used as an opportunity to educate and honor the tremendous contributions of African Americans to the landscape of the United States, setting an intentional goal with a purpose to provide equitable opportunities and access to resources for all students and families. Therefore, be it further resolved that on this 17th day of February 2023, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board does hereby proclaim the month of February as Black History Month. I so move.
Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Stewart, and is there a second? Okay, and it has been seconded by Mr. Russ. All right, are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none? Are there any comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, are there any comments from the board at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Lampford.
Yes, so I have some questions, a little bit of a misunderstanding on my part. First of all, I know that February is already Black History Month, so why do we need a resolution? This, again, I know we had talked about this in a previous meeting with a resolution as well. And anyway, that's my main question, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Daniel. All right, any comments from the board?
Can we answer his question?
Oh, you're asking me to answer the question? Okay. All right, well, Dr. Narcisse, would you like to answer?
Yeah, somebody's in charge around here. The, I mean, yes, Black History Month, the resolution was brought up by, did we have one there?
Historically, the Board adopts a resolution in February to recognize Black History Month. It's a movement of the Board to recognize the importance of Black history, even though it's something we do year-round. This is a time of year that we memorialize it with an actual vote of the Board. I apologize. Hope that helps.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I'd just like to add, I think this resolution is appropriate. You know, East Baton Rouge's school system in particular has just a really shameful history of segregation and discrimination against African American people. And, you know, we've come a very long way from that, but it was not that long ago. I myself was a student when forced busing began over the great objections of many. We've seen a great deal of white flight from the public school system since then. And so I think it's entirely appropriate. As much as I often, you know, wonder why we have various proclamations that don't really do anything other than express a sentiment, I think in this case, it's entirely appropriate for our school board to recognize African American and Black History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. I was hoping to hold my comments until the end. As a social studies teacher, as one who has taught African American history, and as an African American, we know that a lot of times our history has been either attempted to be deleted or in some cases, not discussed as freely as other histories within America. We are all Americans, but it is so important that we learn not only about one facet of history, but that we learn about every facet. As we talked about earlier today, we have many Americans who are joining our country daily, that we also need to acknowledge their histories as well. We want to be fully vetted Americans. And with that in mind, that means that we have to accept those differences. And as my colleague, Mr. Martin, mentioned as well, even the shamefuls, the positives, the goods, the bads, the indifference. And even if that means that we have to establish certain months or weeks to do that as a starting point, then we should. So I applaud whomever was the one who created this resolution or this particular proclamation on behalf of African Americans. And then also, as we again begin to acknowledge even additional minorities within the rest of the year. So thank you so much. Mr. Lewis?
I was just made aware Tuesday night that only 60 schools in America, only 60 schools in this country teach African American history. Baton Rouge High is one of 60 schools in the country who actually teach African American history as a part of their curriculum. Anytime anybody, any people, have been systematically left out of a process, they have to be systematically included. That's why we've had Black History Month, in my opinion, for far too long. Someone already said it, we practice it every day. When you leave here tonight, somebody's going to stop at a red light. Thank God for the red light because an African American man invented the red light. Just little things like that that we don't know. That's because it's been buried in our history books for so long. I really wish we didn't have to have a proclamation for African American history. Because we make history every day. And we've made history every day in this country for over 400 years. So it's time to just be Americans. Just be Americans. That's why I'll stay germane to the topic, but again, whoever put the resolution, I'm glad they did it. And I guess we'll have to keep doing it and doing it and doing it until it becomes a part of just who we are as Americans. Just who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the board? Okay, all right, we will now call for a vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to resolution number four. National Magnet Schools Month: Consideration of a Request for the Adoption of a Resolution Proclaiming February as National Magnet Schools Month. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, April, for picking me for this one. Whereas, there are approximately 4,340 magnet or theme-based schools in the United States, serving nearly 3.5 million students. Whereas, magnet schools are the original form of public school choice and have played an integral role in promoting racial and socioeconomic integration. Whereas, magnet schools are based on five pillars of success: diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, and high-quality instructional systems, and family and community partnerships. Whereas, theme-based magnet schools provide families with a wide variety of public school choice options that nourish the individual talents and abilities of all students and prepare them for college and future success, I'm sorry, future careers. Whereas, magnet schools offer high-quality, rigorous, and specialized programs in science, technology, engineering, and math, steam, aerospace, and aviation, medical and health science, environmental studies, business, finance, and communications, foreign language performing and visual arts, international baccalards, monastery in other theme-based curricula and pedagogy that meets the demands of a global economy. Whereas, magnet schools, principals, and teachers are responsible for providing vision and leadership in their schools and communities and have unique skills, talents, and abilities that are developed through theme-based program and professional development. Therefore, be it resolved, the month of February 2023 is National Magnet School Month, a time for the nation to celebrate school diversity and theme-based magnet programs by hosting events and activities that promote educational equity and excellence for all students. I so move.
Thank you. It has been moved by Mr. Lewis and seconded by Mr. Martin. Comments from the board? Okay, all right, Mr. Lewis?
Can I go right back there? Great. A lot of things in this resolution, we've been talking about since 5 o'clock in here today. Partnerships, family, diversity, curricula. You know, it's what we are, it's public education. It's America. So let's all become more American. And put all the bad things aside. I'll just leave it like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public? All right, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Thomas, and I am the recruiter for magnet programs. And on behalf of the Office of Innovative and Specialized Programs, we want to thank you, Dr. Narcisse, Vice President Powell, and all members of the board as you help us to spread awareness about magnet programs as we celebrate the rich history of magnet schools and the many accomplishments of both local and nationwide magnet schools. Thank you so much for this opportunity and this support. And at this time, I would like to ask any magnet parents or employees that are in the room, students, if you would stand, we thank you so much for all the support that you offer us as well. And also, in celebration of this momentous occasion, we would like to have two of our students from our foreign language immersion programs. We have a student from Flame, as well as a student from Westdale Middle, who would like to wish us all a national Happy Magnet School Month.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Ella et je suis en cinquième année à Baton Rouge Flame. Quel plaisir de célébrer avec vous le mois de l'école magnet. Good evening, my name's Ella, I'm in fifth grade at Baton Rouge Flame. Thank you for celebrating National Magnet Schools Month.
I just want to say, Ella, 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 merci beaucoup pour votre présentation.
Merci.
Buenas noches, me llamo Amaya Johnson y estoy en el octavo grado en Westdale Middle School. Gracias por celebrar el mes nacional de la escuela magnet. Hi, guys, good evening. I'm Amaya Johnson, and I'm in the eighth grade at Westdale Middle School. Thank you, guys, for celebrating National Magnet School Month.
Muchas gracias, Maya.
Thank you. And that Lashin lady was our Student of the Year, am I correct? Yes, yes. Thank you so much. Are there any additional comments from the public at this time? Okay, all right, comments from the board. Mr. Russ?
So I want to first say a big thank you to the folks in our school system that work so hard to serve the kids in our community and our magnet programs. It offers a tremendous benefit to the kids enrolled in your schools. And so I want to make a comment about magnet schools that is a no reflection on the people that do this great work. But I think that as we're considering this resolution and focusing on magnet schools, that we consider the history of magnet schools in our community and how that has impacted the families and the students in our community. Because unfortunately, historically, magnet schools and the policy of selective admission in magnet schools in our community unfortunately creates a lot of have and have-nots in our community. And I think that as we're focusing on the strengths that magnets produce in our community, we also need to think about how we can produce more equity in our community and the availability of these great programs to more kids in our community. So no way, I want to take away from the great work that's being done, I think, as a board and as a system. We need to think about our policies and how we use the strength of our magnet program and consider the history of what that has produced in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. On a matter of personal privilege, just want to note that I was in the first class at Glasgow Middle Magnet when it was open. I was in seventh grade and eighth grade at Glasgow Middle Magnet. My mother-in-law, Brian Post, taught math at Baton Rouge High for many, many years. She's retired now. And so I appreciate all the wonderful work that the magnet schools do for our best and brightest students. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, I just wanted to share my sentiments as well. As being a product of the magnet program, a graduate of Scotlandville Magnet High School, class of '97, and now my son is also a magnet school student. It has been a blessing to be a part of those programs. I do also agree with Mr. Russ, though, as well, that we need to expand. You know, that we need to expand the same level of curriculum to many other sites as well. And I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that as time goes on, we will begin to see that. But again, congratulations on National Magnet School Week, Month, what have you. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? All right, well, let us entertain a vote. Thank you again, you all.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to Alphabet F. Reports from Board Appointees to Committees and Agencies. Are there any Board Appointee reports? Okay, Mr. Russ?
So I want to thank the Board for allowing me to serve as the appointee to the BRECC Commission. And so I've been able to attend my first BRECC Commission meeting. It's a little different than our school board meetings, but still plenty to do. And I was able to meet some of our fellow commissioners, one of whom is here, and also with the Superintendent Wilson. And a few things that have come up in discussion that our superintendent is working on as well with BRECC that we hope to continue to work on is our partnership and after-school programming and summer programming and how we're going to both continue but also improve that and how we can work together to, excuse me, to achieve that along with other agencies in our parish, as well as some opportunities that we have to allow the public to utilize the facilities of our school systems when those facilities are not being used for other schools. For instance, after-school, weekends, and during summer, when we have all these great facilities in our schools, such playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, things like that that the community can get further access to. So those are things that are being discussed and worked on, and I'm sure will come up in the future, as well as BRECC is preparing to launch to the public their next initiative, which is Imagine Your Park System. This was done 10 years ago, and subsequently, that current plan is about to end. And so they'll be reaching out to the public. And so what I would ask the school board is to think about what in the next 10 years can our school system do with our park system? And what would that look like, so that we can offer that feedback to BRECC? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments or reports in regards to Board Appointees to various committees and agencies? Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move to Alphabet G. Consent Agenda. Mr. Gode, if you will share our consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Powell. The Consent Agenda. The following items are to be approved as part of the Consent Agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered as an item on the Regular Agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the Regular Agenda. Two, Request for Proposal EBR Magazine Publication. Consideration of Request to Authorize Staff to Issue a Request for Proposal for a Custom Magazine Publication. Strategic Alignment, Exemplary Customer Services, Funding Source, General Fund. Three, Grant the Line Elect- Three, Grant the Line Electric Company. Consideration of Request to Accept the Donation of 19 Electric Buses and Charging Stations from the Line Electric Company, Provided Funds from the Environmental Protection Agency Grant Award. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence. Four, Professional Services Contract Addendum. Consideration of Request for the Approval of an Addendum to the Professional Services Contract between the East Baton Rouge School Public, East Baton Rouge School System and Amplify to Add Fourth Grade Dibbles Assessment Licenses and Related Materials to the Scope of Work in Order to Meet the Recently Changed Requirements of BESI 1566. Strategic Alignment, Academic Achievement, Funding Source, ESER 2. Resolution, Special Council. Consideration of Request for the Approval of Resolutions Regarding the Retention of Special Council Between East Baton Rouge Public School Board and A Phelps Dunbar LLP and B Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Ju, Judy, Juice, Judice?
Geis.
Geis, okay. Geis, Noah and Perkins LLP. Six, Stipends, Special Education in English as a Second Language Teachers. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of One-Time Stipends for the Following. A, $2,500 for New Teachers Teaching in Critical Need Teaching Area, ESS Special Education. B, $1,000 for Teachers Teaching in the Critical Need Teaching Area, English as a Second Language. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence and Exemplary Customer Service, Funding Source, ESER. This is the end of consent agenda items, and I so moved.
Okay, thank you. So do we ask the question about items being pulled first?
Yes. She has a second, Ms. Stewart.
Okay.
Yes.
So it has been moved by Mr. Goddard and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Now, are there any items that any board members would like to have pulled? Ms. Kennison?
I'd like to request that item number six be pulled.
Okay, all right, item number six. Are there any additional items to be pulled? Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, then we would go into public comment for items 2 through 5?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, the comments from the board first and then the public.
Okay, so any comments from the board for items 2 through 5? Okay, any items, any comments from the public for items 2? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Item four, the Professional Service Contract. You know, I had some questions about this item a couple of weeks ago. But since then, I've researched it, I've had conversations with people, I've looked at it. And we really, we really need this. If we're going to continue down the path of like having great 9th graders achievement and early childhood development, all those things, we really need to make sure that our 4th graders are reading on level. There were some things that I was concerned about in terms of would this be the best platform to use? But there are safety nets in place to make sure that our 4th graders are not falling through the cracks. Because we all know that a lot of our kids that come to us, they're behind, their grade levels behind anyway when we get them. You know, so if we can do all these things that this Amplify will allow us to do, I think we can continue to see the upward trajectory of our students in this district. Because I struggled with it. I struggled with it for a couple of weeks. But I'm a firm believer that we're on the right track using this platform. And the things that are in place are good for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Are there any other comments from the board in regards to items 2 through 5? Okay, comments from the public in regards to items 2 through 5 of the consent agenda. Okay, returning to the board, any comments from the board regarding items 2 through 5? Okay, I guess we will now entertain a vote. Please vote. Sorry, now please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. So now we will go to item 6 from the consent agenda. Item 6 is stipends, special education in English as a second language teachers. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of One-Time Stipends for the Following. Alphabet A, $2,500 for New Teachers Teaching in the Critical Need Teaching Area, ESS Special Education. Alphabet B, $1,000 for Teachers Teaching in the Critical Need Teaching Area, English as a Second Language. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence and Exemplary Customer Service, Funding Source, ESER. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Goddard and seconded by Mr. Baloo. All right, comments from the board. Ms. Kennison?
I would like to, I think it's a motion to bifurcate this into two separate items? I'm not sure why they're together and I'd like to consider them separately.
All right, so again, for clarity, bifurcate means to separate the item?
Yeah, so this is a substitute motion to bifurcate the item. So we need a second.
Just a point of order, I would accept that as a friendly amendment if Mr. Goddard wants to. Okay.
All right, so if that's the case, will we need the motion and the second for that as well?
No, ma'am. The maker of the motion has agreed to a friendly amendment, so we'll move into comments, board and then public.
All right, thank you. Okay, so comments from the board in regards to the item being divided. So will we do Alphabet A first and then B?
Well, we'll take a vote on the motion to actually bifurcate the matter first.
Okay.
If that motion is approved by the board, then we'll consider the first item as a separate new item.
Okay, so comments from the board in regards to bifurcating the item. Okay, all right, Ms. Kennison?
The reasoning for that is that these two things are too, while they're, they look similar, they're two very different things. So I have different opinions on each of them. And one is not related to the other, so out of fairness for the people affected, I'd like to consider them separately.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Comments from the public, Ms. Jackson? Are you speaking on the bifurcation, if I said that correctly? Yes, to separate the two items or in regards to the wording of the item?
Yeah, so we're currently, we're currently considering separating the item into two items. So that would be the nature of the comment at this point.
Okay, thank you. We'll call you back in just a minute. All right, any other comments from the public in regards to the separation of the two items? Okay, comments from the board in regards to separating the two items? Okay, let us call for a vote. Please vote. The motion carries. Okay, so I guess at this point, will I read the consideration, but just for Alphabet A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so this would be 6A. Consideration of a Request for the Approval of One-Time, of a One-Time Stipend for the Following. And that would be $2,500 for New Teachers Teaching in the Critical Need Teaching Area, ESS Special Education. Strategic Alignment, Operational Excellence and Exemplary Customer Service, Funding Source, ESER. All right, is there a motion for Alphabet A? Okay, all right, so it has been moved by Mr. Goddard and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Comments from the board? Okay, Mr. Martin? Turn your mic back on.
Thank, sorry about that. I do that all the time, sorry. I support the, I'm going to support the stipend. However, I want to express my concern that there are a lot of different groups of teachers that are, I'm sure, are in need and that are certainly all very deserving of stipends, a variety of stripes. I'm somewhat concerned that these are brought to us in kind of isolation and not in a context with a broader opportunity for the board to provide priorities or to weigh in on priorities, to understand why these particular ones were chosen versus other particular ones. That said, I'm certainly going, in this matter, going to defer to the recommendation of the superintendent and support these. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
I agree with Patrick in a way that there, I'm sure there's a lot of other high needs. You know, teachers need pay, and this is a critical area of need for our students. I just wish we could give the teachers who've been, you know, in the trenches a little bit longer, I wish we could give them $3,500 or whatever we need to keep moving forward. I spend a lot of time on a lot of teachers. And they love the work, they don't love the pay. But they get up every morning and they get in their cars and they go right back to the trenches because they know how important it is. I'm going to support the motion, but I really, really would like to see us find some additional funds for the teachers who have been in the trenches, who stayed with us through the pandemic, who stayed with us through hecking high water in this district. And I think you want to reward your loyal teachers first. And I understand about the stipend. And I don't think we can look at Ascension or other places like that because that's not necessarily who we compete with. We compete against other urban districts. And maybe we're above the curve, you know, with other cities like Memphis and people that we compare with. But I really would like to see us reward the people who have been in the trenches for a while with just a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Kennison?
Absolutely agree with Mr. Lewis about shifting stipends from, you know, new hires to the teachers that have been with us for a long time and rewarding them. I'm hearing stories of teachers who have been in EBR for over a decade who are with, I think, from what I understand, with the stipend being paid just about the same as a new teacher. I'm not sure about details there per se, but I think that what Mr. Lewis is saying is correct and that it needs to be shifted. Along the lines of the dates here, for the, it's, the ESS stipend is for new hires. Basically, the idea is to bring people in with this little pot of money, but it's for teachers that have already been working with us from May until January. So they're already here. So why are we giving it to them now? Also, like, how many ESS teachers are there? And what's left in this pot of money? Like, how much, how much do we have for these stipends? For new teachers, specifically for ESS teachers? And is there any room to spread it around? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kennison. I just wanted to ask, I read some data before, but I just wanted clarity. Maybe, Ms. Hall, maybe you can help us with this. Was there a requirement or something from the state that we have that we provide more support or something for our teachers that help in these critical areas?
That is correct. So we were out of compliance back in November. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm sorry. My apologies. So yes, we were out of compliance in November through December of 2021 when I came on board. And to respond to the compliance issue or being non-compliant, we have to show one of the requirements is what we're doing. What are we doing as a district to recruit and retain certified ESS teacher? It's such a deficit in the district, but not just here, across Louisiana and across entire country. So this was part of this initiative to address that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also to respond to Ms. Kennison's question, I think it was more of a comment, but I still want to ask as well, is it Ms. Lopez? If you could come forward, please. I know she was asking about whether or not we have the funds available for this stipend. So if you could answer.
So as I understand it, Ms. Hall and the Human Resources Department, we're provided a pot of money in order to handle retention and stipends throughout the year through the ESER funding. And so these funds are being tracked by Dr. Bethley and by Ms. Hall. And so she's tracking how much she has left and what she can provide. Now, I do not know how much the stipend is because I don't know how many teachers it will impact. I assume that Ms. Hall and Dr. Bethley have worked this out amongst themselves, but these are ESER funds that are being spent for the stipend.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Hall?
No worries. So this, so first let me answer your question about how many ESS teachers we have in the district. We have 413, and it's a mixture between gifted and special ed teachers. So we have about 93 gifted and the remainder of 320 specialized teachers. The money that's coming from the ESS, yes, we did receive a pot of money from our grow our own fund. I'm sorry, grow our own initiative, which we created back in, when I came on board. And it's to try to find a way to grow our very own, use our own internal resources instead of tapping and looking outside, what can we do with the resources that we currently have? And this came from, this initiative was a part of many recruiting initiatives. So I did upload an FAQ to help facilitate or, you know, because I know it's not much time up here to explain this, but $7,500 was for core, and I tried to explain it the last time, core subject areas, which is also critical need. The problem that we're facing, we cannot find certified, fully certified teachers. It's very difficult. When they come in with us, we have literally, I know the state has shifted the attention away from this certification process. Well, now we're looking into, if you have a degree, we could hire you and we put you on a path to get certified, but that takes time. we could hire you, and we put you on a path to get certified, but that takes time and there's a lot of requirements. So when we do tap into the gold mine and find certified, fully certified ESS teachers or ESL teachers, we have to figure a way, yes, to retain the current ones we have, but also to attract them because we are also, even though we are an urban school district, we're still competing with the other districts around us. So we're literally pulling from the same space. So this initiative was just, or these two initiatives are part of the recruiting retention initiatives that we have from the Office of Human Resources. Hope that answered the question.
Okay, and I know I have one minute left in my conversation, but my next question is, what are we doing to meet the needs of those teachers who were, who are already veterans? So just to recap.
No worries. So the ESS teachers, there's already a board-approved stipend that was already on the books already. They get $1,000, 500 first semester and 500 at the end of the second semester.
On top of their regular salary?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Goday.
Yes, thank you. Some of the, what I was going to say got touched on just now because I just wanted to remind everyone that we had given an across-the-board stipend to all the teachers at the beginning of the year. Again, it's 500 in the beginning of the year and 500, I think, after January.
ESS.
I'll leave the details to you. But, so we have given money to all of the teachers. So this is, we have spread some of the money around and going through this. And also, we as a board, and we're in the budget process right now, have made a commitment to do our best to come up with an 8% across-the-board pay raise for that because I don't want to get into the stipend business. We need to be giving reasonable salaries as we have that. So I think we are addressing many of the concerns that my fellow board members have brought up. We have given stipends to all teachers and we have in process a way to upgrade the salaries across the board for that. Again, this particular one is related to hiring in new people to address a deficit that we inherited from several years back and brought to our attention by LDOE. So in no way do I want any current teachers to think that they're being slighted. We have given a stipend to those current teachers, and this is something that's outside of that purview as we go through that, but we do know we need to change our salary structure, and that is well on the way. So thank you very much.
Ms. Stewart?
I actually really don't have to make a comment. I was going to speak along the lines with my colleague Goday in regards to the teachers previously already having a stipend, and I was kind of confused when it was said that they didn't, so I was under the impression that I heard Ms. Hall mention last time that they did receive a stipend, so I just wanted to make that clear, but that's what my comment was. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Hall. Okay, comments from the public? The first, we have Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Madam. I'm sorry. Good evening, Madam Vice President Powell, Dr. Narcissus, and board members. First, I want to say respectfully that the $1,000 stipends for the ESL teachers, you just had a report about how vital these teachers are, or the support that they give our students, the students in EBR, but yet they're only getting $1,000. The other teachers got a $3,000 stipend. Why is there the difference?
Excuse me, Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry. So I just want to have a moment of clarity. So should she only speak to Item A at this time?
Yes.
Okay. And that is, that's the ESS?
That's the 2,500 for ESS, right, so not the 1,000 for the ESL.
Got you, I apologize, I'll come back for that one.
Okay.
Okay. This is a new, again, it was mentioned, and correct me if I'm mistaken, that they received a $3,000 stipend that everyone got, right? I believe they received that.
Yes.
So this is an additional stipend on top of that. When you, and the issue that I have with that is you have new teachers starting off with $48,000, and I got a text from a 17-year veteran in this district that's making 50. So that's a problem. That needs to be fixed. They don't need that money. It should be across the board, it should not just be certain teachers. The goal is to strategic alignment, to operational excellence, and exemplary customer service, discriminate against teaching areas is not the way to achieve it. Again, there's been a commitment made for an 8% raise win. The teachers want to know, when is it coming? When are y'all going to get together to make this happen? We're beyond the election now, I know. Form a committee, make it happen. You have to feed the teachers before they eat the students. Again, the money, these stipends are great. If that attracts and retains people, I doubt if it would because it's not attracting me, but if it does, great. But you do need to concentrate on making sure these teachers are getting the services and the money that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, Mr. Langford.
Good evening. I fully support this motion for the stipend for ESS teachers and for English language learners, teachers, and hoping to get certified in both regular ed for elementary schools, special ed, and since they mentioned the influx of people coming from other countries and English language learners and that as well, ELL as well. And I know that these teachers, the ESS and ELL teachers, provide a vital service for our district, and I'm fully supportive of this stipend. The only thing I have a question about, it goes along with what Mr. Goday was saying about how we should be providing the, and I think we already are, it already started in February, we started giving pay raises to EBR employees, and so I was wondering, just wanted to make sure we were doing that and not just stipends. I don't even see why we need the stipends so much if we're already giving pay raises to EBR employees.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. We have two, well, I think it's one, one comment from someone who had to leave, so they just simply left their note, and the note is from Mr. Caleb Holmes, and he says that veteran teachers should receive stipends and that we should amend the resolution to support existing teachers. First, we must support our dedicated, long-term teachers that we have. And so that comment is from Mr. Caleb Holmes. Thank you. All right, any additional comments from the public at this time? Okay, comments from the board? Mr. Martin?
Yes, so at the beginning of the school year, this was part of our original initiatives for '22, '23. We had a new board coming in, and a lot of the items that, for example, these and some that's coming in March to you guys, had to get pushed back, and this was one of the items, or two, these two items had to taken off the agenda to accommodate for other more, I want to say, not saying that this is not important, but crucially or overly important, so this is why it's here now. And the only reason why the 31st of January is there, because I want to make sure that I am, have, extend a level of fairness if we've hired anyone between then and now because we've changed the date when we came to the board, I would like to also capture those individuals.
We sort of had an expectation or plan that we'd be able to offer these, but you were unable, quite able to get the board to vote for it because of the change.
Right, we had to, right, pick and choose, it was the superintendent.
And second, could you, could you speak to what impact doing this will have, you expect to have on morale and retention of the experienced teachers, kind of what Ms. Jackson and others have asked?
Yes, I want to also preface, and I hope Ms. Tebby is still here, that she could share with me, if the person feels comfortable, for me to look at their salary. So historically, we're doing a major cleanup with HR. The, Dr. Hart was here, he mentioned about HR audit, and I came on board at that time. And the morale and culture with this district is really low, and we acknowledge that, and we're doing absolutely everything that we can, as fast as we can, to initiate the change or shift in culture. I know it's rough, I know it's hard, but I want everyone to hang in there with this, with us. We do have the already board-approved stipend for 500 at the beginning of the school year and 500 at the end of the school year. In addition to all, all employees received $3,000 stipend, which was back in December, and last year, we had several other stipends that all employees received amongst, along with pockets of different teachers based on gaps or critical shortages.
And one last question. Am I correct in assuming that if we took the available pot of money that you're able to spend on these stipends and just distributed it across the board, we'd get like, what, 20 bucks a teacher or something like that?
Right, and that's the concern. Our initiatives from HR standpoint, we literally try to be intentional about the recruitment efforts and maximizing the resources that we have. So we shift things around as we see the trends are moving. If there's a shift in ESS teachers are leaving the district, if there's a shift in core teachers are leaving the district, we have to respond and be proactive, not wait until after the horses leave the gate for us to do something. So I do, I do understand, but I do not, the current budget that I have right now was earmarked for this. I don't have enough unless Dr. Narcisse decided to make an executive decision and get you guys to vote on that, then I am open to it, but what I have is what I have available.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Russ?
So as I understand and understanding some of the public comment and some of the feedback I've received in the past couple of weeks as this has been discussed, has a lot to do with existing staff and teachers' desire to see fairness in our compensation across the board. From what I understand, Ms. Hall, there's been a lot of work placed on your department and HR in terms of examining policy, pay scale, but you're also given the directive that we have to recruit to fill needs that must be filled, not only to serve children, but under demand directive from LDOE that we have to fill these positions. I think that we, I want to be really sensitive in how I say this because the last thing I want to do is piss off the hard-working teachers that we have in our community. But if I'm a teacher, I would rather see a school staff, fully staffed, than to walk in and have to cover three classrooms, right? And I want, just want to say, it is my commitment to our staff, to our educators, that my number-one priority in our upcoming budget will be our educators, our support staff, in ensuring that we deliver what has been promised, which is that 8% raise across the board, that we have examined pay scales to ensure that 17-year teachers are not making the same thing they were 17 years ago, and I'm sure Ms. Hall is going to work on that for us.
Yes, I sure will.
My ask to our community of 6,000 EBR employees is to say that there is no system in which everything is going to be fair right now, unfortunately. When there's a big pot of money up for grabs, everybody is always going to think about, what about mine? And I understand that. But I encourage everyone to think about, what about kids? And give us patience as a board and as a system as we try to deal with these inequities. I can't imagine any board member here today that that is not highly top of mind in the coming months, and we have set workshops for our budget coming up so that our board members can fully understand the challenges that we face coming into a budget season where we have a shortfall, and we've also made some big promises. So there's going to be some tough work ahead, but I can assure you, and I will speak with the permission from this board, but that is our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. I had a question. The first was for teachers who are not certified. I know you mentioned that before. Is, are there funds put aside to assist them in getting certified?
I'm glad you asked that question. So, yes, the Grow Our Own program that we have internally, we fund, and the money comes from this pot of money. So if you are certified, we love folks who have multiple certification certifications because it helps us fill so much needed space, like ESS, super hard, super hard to find a fully certified ESS teacher anywhere. So now we have to, we have to look at the trend and say, wait a minute, what can we do internally to get ahead of this trend that's happening? And that's where our own program comes in and be able to fund, you want to add certification on, we will walk you through the process like a DMV service. Sit you down, fill out the application, walk you through from start to finish, and pay for it. So part of the initiative, and a lot of folks don't know about the little nuggets that we have in HR, and welcome folks to reach out to us and come on down, and we will chat about all the things, but I just want to preface that we do love everyone, we do adore teachers, but what I have, I have to figure out what I need to do to fill a much-needed gap in being compliant with LDOE.
So that's another plug, teachers. If you, if you want to teach and you're not certified, you need to come see Ms. Hall. All right, the other is, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Russ. I felt that anxiety when you, when you mentioned about having three classes to cover, and that is the truth, you all. So as a teacher, the idea of having to cover classes on every given break that I had, and I've been there and I've done that, that is really, really hard work, and the reality is, if you don't have those vacancies filled, that that's what you're going to have to do. And it should be a group or a community effort to say, let's get the vacancies filled. And if that's what, if it means that there has to be a one-time stipend given for me to be able to go and use the bathroom, then that's, that's what needs to happen. So I totally agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and Mr. Russ, just one other thing, you talked about the salary and change and all that, we've already begun that work. We've met with myself and my team, one-on-one with all principals and APs, that we've made some shifts already, and we're on next to the support staff. So there's a lot of things happening. Just call me or email me so I could talk to you and help along the way if I don't know I cannot fix the problem. So I just wanted to share that. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Stewart has waived the right to speak. Okay, are there any other comments from the board? Okay, we will now entertain a vote, and this is for Alphabet A. Consideration of a request for the approval of one, of a one-time stipend for the following. That would be Alphabet A, $2,500 for new teachers teaching in the critical need teaching area, ESS, special education.
Please vote. The motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving to 6B. Consideration of a request for the approval of a one-time stipend for the following. Alphabet B, $1,000 for teachers teaching in the critical need teaching area, English as a second language. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, and exemplary customer service. Funding source, ESER. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Baloo and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Are there any comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public? Ms. Tebby Jackson? Ms. Tebby Jackson?
Good evening again. I'm Tebby Jackson, I'm an educator, a school administrator. And $1,000 is not enough. These teachers are currently teaching. They did not receive the same amount as the other teachers received in the district. They got $3,000. So why did they get a different amount? ESL is equally as important as core subjects. As you discussed earlier from your reports, they have broad job descriptions, they're doing a lot of work, and they deserve the same amount that the other teachers got. And that's my only comment, is that it should be across the board, the same amount. Everyone should have gotten the same amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other public comments? Okay, comments from the board. Mr. Martin. Mike, please.
I'm so sorry. Again, my wife texted me to fuss at me for that, too. Ms. Hall, you could address that and speak to, you know, the relative equities of teacher salaries in those areas and the other factors that may go into why these amounts are different, please.
Yes, so at the beginning of the school year, we start thinking about, actually, let me back up a little bit. In April of last year, we start looking at the next school year and what type of recruitment efforts that we need to put in place to address certain things. The ESS, because that was a state mandate, hence why the 2,500. And we are literally competing with everyone else around us. It'd be cool if we could get folks from Texas to come over, but we don't pay as much in terms of being competitive to attract. So we have to figure out something else to attract them. ESL, we have, I shared out the board-approved calendar for all stipends. All stipends that were board-approved of a period of three years, that's on the books. The next ask I would love to be able to do, because if you look at the amount of 500 and 500, it reflects the same as the ESS. So I would love for this to be an ongoing effort to be able to align with. So I do understand the difference, but the 2,500 was focused on fulfilling or correcting a compliance issue that we had in November of 2021. And there was not enough funds to go around. And if you look at the backup that I shared, 20 teachers would be getting ESS, which you can tell by the numbers, it's so hard to find. And ESL teachers, 81 teachers. So it's a lot, it's a bigger amount of folks that we have to spend this money on. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. And I believe you answered my question already by sharing that there are funds available even if EL teachers needed to get certified, or teachers needed to get certified or receive the EL certification. So if that were the case, if there was someone who came and said that they needed to get EL certified and they wanted to teach in that area, would we pay for their certification as well as they would get that $1,000 stipend?
Yes, same as the ESS, same as the other subject areas that have already board-approved stipends. So yes, this is the first time we're doing anything with ESL. Literally look, pocket out the different recruitment efforts and around ESL. And Dr. Hart talked about the need or the growing trend of the ESL influx of students coming in. So we had to figure out a way how to attract folks. And yes, $1,000 is not enough to attract everyone. But then I have ESS over here where there's a compliance issue, and then I have core subject matter over here. You know, I have to figure out, prioritize exactly how and where. Love to be able to do for everyone, 3,000, 5,000, but I just don't have the capacity with what I have in my growing, grow our own within our HR department. So that's, I'm sorry, I'm giving you little pieces to kind of make this whole puzzle make sense, but that's what I have.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That just means that as soon as possible, we need to get that 8% raise. That's what that means.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lewis?
You're welcome.
Any additional comments from the board? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall.
You're welcome.
All right, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to Alphabet H, new business. Number one, unclaimed property. Consideration of a request to authorize the superintendent and staff to work cooperatively with the Louisiana Department of Treasury to provide with EBR PSS employee authorization an opportunity to obtain unclaimed property. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Goday and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Thank you. Comments from the board? Ms. Kinnison?
Before I get to the item, back to the social and emotional learning thing that I spoke of earlier, one of the things that I was lied to directly about was putting new business on the regular agenda. I was promised that that was not going to happen because it causes issues, because everything needs to go through the cow unless it's some sort of emergency situation. That needs to be addressed. But about this item, it seems odd to me, and I'm not sure, like, like, why we're making it automatic and employees have to opt out? It seems like it's just one more thing to make employees do. I think it's a nice idea for people to sign up if they wish, but I have an issue with automatically sending employee information to other government agencies unless they specifically opt out. That seems like a little tricky sort of area. Is it legal even?
Concert queue, I'm waiting for, to come on up. So I'm going to lean on Mr. Shamlin to help me with this. There's a policy, a board policy that we cannot just go out and readily share information. We have to ask for permission to do so. And Mr. Shamlin, you could kind of help to legalize what I'm trying to say here.
Yeah, sure. So Ms. Hall and Dr. Narcisse brought this matter to me for review. I actually consulted with special counsel on it because I wanted to be certain. We looked into the process we would have to undertake to essentially share employee information to allow them to access unclaimed property. The idea behind this is to help facilitate employee access to resources. They may not even know we're there, right? And so when we looked into it, as we kind of delved into it, talked in more detail, we kind of came to a conclusion, I believe, that we would, in addition to seeking board authority, also seek employee authority before doing this. So I think you're referring to an opt-out, but I believe it would be an opt-in. But I'll let Ms. Hall speak to that.
I don't have a problem to change the language, or I am open to whatever directives, if you think that opt-in.
Yeah, but the language of the item is with employee authorization.
In the backup, doesn't it say that you specifically have to opt out? Unless that changed in the last day?
Yeah, it may have changed. We can make sure we note that for the record before you vote, to make sure that your vote is an approval of an opt-in, if that's the leisure of the rest of the board.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Martin?
Got it. I share Ms. Kinnison's concern that this does not strike me as the type of emergency thing that should come to the board without going through the committee. You know, I won't let that affect my vote this time, but I would urge the superintendent and staff to redouble efforts to follow the normal protocol. In terms of the burden on the teachers, I could see, I can see kind of the opposite side of it, that telling them that they have to opt in to get this nice service to maybe find $50 or $100 or some old electrical service deposit that's on, at the Treasury's office, might be putting more burden than it's worth on the teachers to take advantage of it. But I guess, Mr. Shamlin, have you looked at whether, are there any negative repercussions? I mean, I've followed to get some property back from the state before, but I don't know if that exposes people to the tax man coming to look for them or something like that, right? Is there any potential negative consequence to a teacher of sharing this information with the Treasury's office in terms of their regulations or what they do with the information or liens that they might put that people might prefer not to raise that attention to the Treasury's office?
Yeah, so we vetted this thoroughly through legal counsel, through myself, and we did talk about it. And I believe we decided it would be best to allow an opt-in or at least an employee authorization that would require some action on the employee. It does put more burden on staff. I mean, we've talked about that. I think that was a concern, that we wanted to try and ease people's access to this without putting too much, you know, without turning it into too much, too many layers of, yeah, additional process. But hearing the concerns of the board members and even some public people, you know, the recommendation would be opt-in, which would require employees to actually take an action to allow us to do this. So I think that puts to rest, Mr. Martin, your concern. If an employee opts in, then they have the option to think about what that might mean for them in terms of effects before they make a decision. So I think that kind of solves that problem.
Okay, as long as we can have clarity in the motion, because, you know, the document that's still up right now talks about being opt-out. So if there's clarity on the motion, that it's opt-in.
Who made the motion? Was it Mr. Russ? So if he would, and not them, but was it, who made the motion?
Who moved?
I think I did.
Mr. Goday. So if you accept a friendly amendment to specifically require an opt-in, we can do that.
I just wanted to share that I have Kathleen Lobell, hope I'm pronouncing correctly. She's the Director of the Treasury Department. So she's here to answer those questions that you have that I cannot answer, so I brought backup.
Please do, thank you very much.
I'm Kathleen Lobell, I'm the Director of the Unclaimed Property Division, and I can assure you that we do not share information with the Tax Department. We are Treasury, we are not the Department of Revenue, and there's no way that we would, you know, put any lien on anybody for participating in our program. We have over a billion dollars that has not been claimed. In spite of all of our efforts for advertising, most of the items that come to us end up in our custody because we don't have a current address for the person. So we get asked all the time, why don't you just send me a check? Well, we don't know your current address. And it came to our attention that employers have that information. So we started this program to allow employers to send us their employee data. We, the pilot participant was the Baton Rouge General. They sent us 4,500 names, and we ended up with 572 checks, representing $42,000 for their employees. So we hope to be able to offer that to the EBR employees as well.
And ma'am, thank you very much, and we appreciate the program and y'all's outreach efforts. In terms of opt-in versus opt-out, what are other employers choosing to do?
The Baton Rouge General did an opt-out. We had another smaller company that has participated. We just started this program on February 2nd. So we had another smaller company participate, and I don't really know how they handled it. We're leaving it up to each individual employer. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Russ?
Yes, originally I was going to propose a friendly amendment to that, but I think that's been handled. I just want to comment that I've spoken with Treasurer Schroeder about this, and I've seen the success of this program. For many, many, many years, unclaimed property just got swept into the general fund for the state, and they took that money that belonged to the citizens over our state. So I commend the Treasury for trying to reach out to our community and get that money back in the hands where it belongs. I'm certainly sensitive to why we would want to have an opt-in. And I'm curious, so we've got 6,000 employees. That's, I'm curious what the opt-in rate could be because we get so many emails that probably go out, right? It would take a lot of effort, I think, to get a successful opt-in. And I'm wondering if there are opportunities where we may be able to do that in person. I've seen Treasury show up to meetings and say, hey, come here if you want me to check for you. It happened at my Rotary Club, and they found a couple people that needed money. That might be a huge effort on your part, but maybe there's another way that we can do this to get, to achieve what you're trying to achieve.
We would be willing to come out if you want to put something together. And Ms. Hall has my contact information if you want to reach out for that.
Yeah, are there opportunities, Ms. Hall or Mr. Dr. Narcisse, where we get a lot of people together or perhaps annually we see them in person that we can do this?
I mean, there's ways we can kind of do that. I guess we'll have to work through it with the Treasury Department. It will be a labor of love on your end as well to come out a few different ways. So we can work through some ways on it. But it's just, you know, like you said, we have 6,000 employees, and so we'll have to figure out those spaces to do that.
Yeah, and for an in-person event, each claim would have to be taken individually, and that's a much more lengthy process. If we get a list, we can run that through our database and cut the checks so much more quickly.
But the concern I have, just in terms of the difference, is, you know, when you do either an opt-in or opt-out, especially with the amount of employees we have, I'm always fearful that some employees may not, without us having a much more hands-on approach to them, may, you know, may not understand that to where we leave, they leave money on the table, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to share, number one, in regards to this particular item. Well, before I ask the question I had for this item, Mr. Shamlin, will you tell us if there is a policy in place for items coming directly to the board, to the full board meeting, instead of going through the cow first?
Yeah, so there's a couple of references to our policies. Specifically, when there are policy revisions or amendments, it's suggested that those go through the cow and then the regular meeting. The policy itself, our meeting policy actually creates a cow or committee, the whole meeting, as a vetting process. So the expectation is any item that the board will consider goes through the cow when possible. There've been times in the past, not just with this administration, but previous administrations, where if there was a time constraint, or if there was a critical need to address something because of a deadline that was out of the control of staff, we would put on a regular meeting for consideration, right? But generally, items will go through the cow for consideration to allow the board to vet, the public to vet, et cetera, fully before final adoption.
Okay, thank you. All right, and the other, I just wanted to share in regards to the item that we're addressing right now. I feel like, I know that within the paperwork, when we do our new hire paperwork and things like that, that there are certain opt-in, opt-out options. And within that, there's a level of wording that allows you to understand what you're opting in or opting out of. So I just feel like, you know, if we were to add this particular opportunity, then we just need to make sure that we are strategic with the writing and the wording to make it clear for people to know, for employees to know what they're opting into. So we just have to be very, very clear in that. Thank you. Okay, are there any additional comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public? Okay, all right. Okay, so comments from the board. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Vice President. You know, the more I think about it, you know, we're not talking massive sums of money generally in these unclaimed property things. You know, $50 here, $200 there, gas deposit, water deposit, things like that. Every now and then, there's a big chunk of change. And so I'm, you know, I really am more inclined to think that if I were a teacher... And so I'm, you know, I really am more inclined to think that if I were a teacher, I wouldn't want to, you know, I'd just like to have somebody just go do this unless I chose to opt-out. So, you know, I'm, you know, I'd just assume, you know, leave it as the superintendent recommended and have it be opt-out, but I'll certainly defer to the general judgment of my colleagues on that.
Thank you. Ms. Kennison?
I will respectfully disagree, wholeheartedly with that. I think teachers have enough to deal with every day at work, and then when they go home, they probably don't want to have to think about where their information is being sent while they're trying to teach the kids. My question for you, ma'am, isn't there a way to file a claim just individually without being an employee?
Yeah, absolutely.
And what's that process?
We have a website, lacashclaim.org. They can go online, search for their own property, and start the claim process.
So we could save everyone lots of time and energy by just putting up a couple of posters?
How many of them are really going to do that, though? Because, you know, we advertise everywhere. We have digital ads running.
I'm just seeing, like, weighing the benefits to employees. Maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like the majority of people don't want their information shared unless they've given permission. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Mr. Godey?
Thank you. Ms. Hall, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. What exactly is the information that is shared as it goes to this?
We need social security number, name.
Okay, social security number. You answered it right there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Okay, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Did you want the motion reread? I think one board member was asking for the motion to be reread. Is that okay?
Sure.
Please do.
Okay. So this is H1, unclaimed property. Consideration of a request to authorize the superintendent and staff to work cooperatively with the Louisiana Department of Treasury to provide with EBR PSS employee authorization and opportunity to obtain unclaimed property.
So I'll read the amended version.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President, it's a consideration of request authorizing the superintendent and staff to work cooperatively with the Louisiana Department of Treasury to provide with EBR PSS employee authorization via an opt-in process and opportunity to obtain unclaimed property.
Okay, thank you.
In the backup, it still says, there's like instructions on opting, like, this is too confusing to vote on. This is why I think it should ought to be put through the committee of the whole. What are we actually, what are we actually voting on? Is it opting in or opting out?
The motion before the board is to approve this with an opt-in process. That's the language of the motion, yes. And so the backup materials will not apply in this case. We would have to develop a new process.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Thank you. H2 reads intergovernmental agreement. Consideration of a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the East Baton Rouge Parish Sheriff's Office to provide for a school resource officer administrator. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Mr. Lewis. All right, comments from the board? Okay, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'd just like to ask the superintendent to speak to why this is sufficiently, or this is obviously school security very important in today's environment, but why is this so urgent that it needs to come now without going through the committee and having time for us and the public to digest it, really?
Thank you for that question, Board Member Martin. When we came aboard, as you know, we have been working hard to add more security force, not only to each of our schools, we had a priority for middle and high schools. A part of our conversation has been, we had an agreement with the Sheriff's Office at Gojo and also Chief Murphy Paul to vamp up security, and that happened with the last board. Where we are now, as we've been in conversations, you know, with all the incidents we have been going on in various schools, was to begin to start the process on trying to get someone to be the head of security in partnership with the Sheriff's Office because of the SROs. And so in our conversation with Sid Gojo, the Sheriff's Office, he should have been here tonight, but there's a banquet that they have going on. We had to work on an MOU to begin this process because we have this current space in our schools that's going on right now. And if I could get Ms. Monique Scott Spalding, our Chief Operating Officer, to add more context for you on this space, this is why we began the process of moving forward. Monique, want to add anything else?
Hear me? Oh, there you go, sorry. So currently, we have two captains from EBR SO that come to work with us. They work each 45 hours plus a pay period. One of the captains is no longer able to work with us, and so we spoke to Dr. Narcisse, we looked at the incidents in schools, and we've asked for more support. So this captain, Captain Walker, is able to come on board and support us full-time.
So does this mean, then, that we won't be hiring, you know, like one of our own employees to be, you know, as a chief security officer or something like that?
So, Dr. Narcisse, I'll just say law enforcement manages law enforcement. We don't have a layperson to do that.
All right, Mr. Lewis?
I don't really know what's going to happen with this item. My biggest concern is law enforcement, managing law enforcement, which is dealing with our children. So whenever this takes place, I expect to see some biased training. I want those officers to understand that they're there to protect the children, the teachers, and administrators. Administrators need to understand that these gentlemen are not there to help them discipline students.
That is correct.
Okay? So if they're using law enforcement to discipline students, they need to be disciplined. So I don't know what we're going to do with this amendment, but whatever we do with it, it needs to be thought out, and everybody's roles needs to be clear. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart?
I just wanted to get some clarity on this. You mentioned that you currently have two officers that kind of oversee the SROs currently at the schools. One left, and so you're looking to replace the one that left, or just have that one?
To have one full-time.
And so you won't have the other? So you only have the one full-time that oversees? So what would be the change in the position? Is there any type of change or anything in regards to the person that will take this position full-time? Is there any type of change or anything that will be implemented or put in place as a result of him taking this position with one officer as full-time?
So first of all, obviously, it'll be one officer full-time. He'll be able to manage all of the day shift. We do have a captain who manages the night shift, evenings and weekends. And so this is solely for the day shift. Captain Walker has worked with the district. Well, let me have him share some of his experience with you. Captain Walker?
Good evening, Dr. Narcisse and members of the board. First, I want to say that I'm extremely excited about this opportunity. I won't be able to smile today because it may ruin my reputation, but I'm very excited about being here. I bring with me 30 years of law enforcement experience. I'm the commander of the special community, that's our crime team. I've been involved with the schools since 1998. I was a resource officer, where I walked the same hallways and breezeways as these deputies today. So I know the schools. I care about the kids. I care about the support team that we have, and I know together we'll make a difference. It's not about making arrests every day with kids. We don't care about that. We care about changing lives, about being impactful, and providing something positive to these kids. I've talked to kids since 1998, and I've tried to give them something, not just walking through the schools and being a force, but being a positive light. These kids need hope. They look at us as law enforcement. We can give real-life experiences about consequences, things that you can do to stay out of jail. We don't want the kids to go from schools to prisons. That's not why we're there. We're there to change lives by the things that we do every day. We talk to these kids during their breaks, lunch breaks. We have private conversations. We have real talks with these kids. And so I want the new resource officers to be there to have the input that we need to change the lives by the hope that we can give them. We've seen a lot of things in our careers and lives and things like that, but we have to be able to pour that positive energy into these kids every day. And the group that I'm recruiting now, they have that same mindset. We have to give, we have to pull the negative out and replace it with positivity. It's not going to change until we do something. We have the experience, and I have, like I said, 30 years of experience, and I'm here to help, not to hurt. I know people see us and they think we're here to arrest, and I appreciate what you said, Mr. Lewis. We want to help. And I know I'm the person with the energy, the passion, and enthusiasm to do it. So I hope that you all welcome me, and I look forward to working with you all.
I want to respond to that. Thank you. I have a background in law enforcement, and so I'm real passionate about the interaction that the SROs have within the schools. And so my question was, when I initially said, you know, was anything going to change or was anything different going to be implemented? And what I mean is, like some of us said, children react or base their reactions on, with people, on whether or not they feel like they care. And that includes the officers. And so I know that there are issues within our schools. I get fight videos sent to my phone all the time. And so with that being said, I never see any, you know, officer or the SRO in any, around the situations in the various videos that are sent. So I'm sent it to say, when I say, are any things going to change in regards to the interactions with the SROs, with students, or what type of trainings, on how they interact with students, and how, when things occur, what is done? So that was my concern in regards to, you know, how the SROs interact with the schools and the students to try to help with the issues that go on. Not to discipline them, as you guys say, but the issues that go on. And I say that because also, too, sometimes I encounter some of our young juveniles as a result of the criminal justice system. And so ultimately, I know, like I said, they react based off of how these officers act with them.
Right. We have an SRO program that all of the officers has to go through, but the interaction comes, you may see a kid fight, have a fight, but most of the time, you don't know the root cause. I was at the transfer point maybe about two weeks ago, and just to give a brief, I'm going to make it quick. These two girls had a fight, and I pulled one away, my coworker put another one away. And so this girl that was fighting, she was totally stone-faced. Every question I asked her, she looked straight ahead, never looked at me at any point. I said, why are y'all fighting? Well, this girl said this, this girl said that, and she had the same mean look. I said, well, did it make any sense for you to fight like that? She had the same mean look. Yes, yes, I had to fight. I said, well, what would your mother and father say if they saw you behave like this? She immediately stopped, her cold face, she turned, tears ran down the side of her face. I got distracted to do something else for some reason or another, and I left, and I didn't get a chance to talk to this kid. But you know what I did? You know what I messed up at? I lost an opportunity. Because when she turned and faced me and tears ran down her face, I touched something in her, but I didn't realize it until I got home that night. I said, man, you messed up. You lost a great opportunity to impart something positive in this female, but I didn't catch it until later. And those are the things that I can't allow me to do, because these opportunities don't come often. And when you get a chance to have a deep conversation with a child and you know that you had him at that particular time, we have to take full advantage of that. And so I want to teach the new guys coming out that when these opportunities present themselves, you have to go full throttle. And I missed that, and I apologize, I missed it. I let her down because I didn't, I didn't see the change in her expression. I thought about it later, but I should not have let her go. And so those are the trainings that I want for the new guys, just to pay attention and look for opportunities when you have a chance to talk to these kids. They'll give it to you. It may be subtle, but you have to pay attention, and I didn't pay attention. So I failed her. I failed her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my question first is, and maybe this has been answered, but I think it was not clear. Will this role replace the director of school security? Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, ma'am, it will.
Okay. And then also, my next question is, will the salary be paid by the Sheriff's Office or by East Baton Rouge Parish School System?
So currently, the structure is the sheriff will pay the full-time salary, and the supplemental salary will be managed by EBR schools.
Okay, explain, what does that mean?
So Captain Walker is still an employee at the Sheriff's Office. I'm not sure how much time he has before retirement, but he's still employed by the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office is giving us an employee to manage in this role. But there's a supplemental salary that we pay for managing the law enforcement. And so it's upwards of $55,000. I think we put 62 in the space to be able to allow for increases over the years.
Okay, okay. And thank you. And then my last question is actually for Officer Walker. Thank you so much for sharing that testimony.
Yes.
I currently am a district representative for the North Baton Rouge area, which would be many of our inner-city schools. And of course, if you've followed any of that process, you know that we've recently had adults to come on campus.
Right.
And engaging in altercations. There have been questions from the community about, why is it that there was a delay in arresting those adults who came on campus? Like, they had days of words before an arrest took place. How would you handle that, you know, if you were in this role?
Well, now, after looking at the footage and everything, there are certain things that has to take place for the actual arresting, taking the person from the place to the prison. There has to be something more than just what we saw at that time. Because once we make an arrest, we can't unarrest. So we have to have all the information, all the statements, everything together, so we have enough evidence to make an arrest. In that particular case, well, I'm not going to go too far into technical parts, but we didn't have enough at that particular time to make the arrest, but we talked about that. And now we know what needs to be done to make those actual physical arrests. We can arrest with a summons, that's a misdemeanor. We don't put misdemeanors in jail. But to make an actual physical arrest is a felony.
Okay.
And we didn't have everything we needed at that particular time to make that physical arrest.
Okay, thank you for answering. All right, Mr. Russ?
I think a lot of what I wanted to ask about has been answered. I just want to make sure that we're all clear about what this motion proposes is that, as opposed to bringing in, say, a retiree or someone that, like we've had previously, we're going to strengthen our relationships between our law enforcement agencies, allow them to do what they do best. And from what it sounds like Mr. Walker is describing is what we need, which is community policing models.
Yes.
And I don't believe that we should be in the business of policing our schools. I think we should be in the business of education and leave safety to the experts, in which case, in this parish, our two law enforcement agencies. It seems like the sheriff is going to provide a great value to our system, essentially subsidizing the cost of what Mr. Walker is going to be doing for us, and he's very experienced. So I'm excited to see what we're doing here because of the, it's just so vital that we get a handle on our security in our schools. We have a lot, a lot of work to do.
Yes.
And this would be just the beginning. So I just want to say I'm in support of this motion, and that I hope to see some really great community policing in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Okay, thank you. Comments from the public?
What are our strategic plan is?
Just a moment, just a moment.
I'm sorry?
Yes, because I think that we've heard from, yeah, so give us just a moment. And so then we need our public comments, and then you'll be able to speak again, Mr. Lewis. Okay, any public comments? All right, now, Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board?
With the school resource officers, is there some place in our strategic plan for their, what they do, what we're going to be asking them to do, where that fits in?
Where this would fit is more around our operational excellence section. We haven't pulled out specifically language around SROs, but, you know, this is a part of efficiency, and also safety for our families and communities.
In order to keep him with all the wonderful things that I think are going on in this district, that needs to be as much a part of what we do as reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Yeah, one thing that we, their team have incorporated, and I'll let Ms. Spalding can talk about it, has been to make sure that we're tracking where we're having priority incidents. I think I talked with Board Member Russ this week around, we've been able to do where we assess all of like the security and where the hot spots are in those pieces. And then so the guidance to officers and security has been more targeted and strategic, so we can align resources to more and more problematic areas, because it's not happening at every place. But there are particular neighborhoods and communities that we have to be able to focus on a little bit more to help support, and also to provide various supports, not just only the piece around community policing, but also mental health support and those. So we've been working closely with armed forces. I mean, the great thing about Captain Walker is we work closely with the sheriff's office, Sid Gochro, on a number of areas. We work with BRPD, and they actually work together as well. I know sometimes people don't see that. And we also, you know, have been engaging also in particular areas with the DA's office, with Hillary Moore, and other agencies. I mean, this work is an intergovernmental work around the problem. It's not just solely the school. Historically, it's only been just a school thing, and we are much more now aligned than I think we've ever heard in terms of trying to coordinate and solve the problem. As you even saw this week, you know, just the conversation around Save BR, we're working around truancy. So there's a much more coordinated effort right now trying to resolve some issues, but a lot of these challenges are much more complex. So some of the things, the main goals that we've talked specifically about is important for safety in schools, important for working with families, understanding how they engage in schools, and also the safety of children inside. I think what has been very clear to me, hearing about board members, is to really make sure that we have safety in place, but also how our officers are kind of working through them. So the experience that Captain Walker is bringing is going to be tremendously helpful, especially as we continue to add. I think we've added, wow, the total number that we've added in terms of force in the last year or two has been how many, Dion?
Since January, we've added three new SROs.
Three, and so can you give the board and the community just the total amount of officers we've had?
On a daily basis, with daily, with the day shift, it's averaged around 16 officers per day.
And so one of the, one of the work that we've been trying to do is we prioritize middle and high school first, that we wanted to have officers at, and then we wanted priority areas for elementary schools. As you know, we have 45 elementary schools, and so they prioritize areas that were much more unsafe than others. And the goal is, if we can get them all, is our goal, but we have to kind of work through with our, all of our agencies to be able to do this together.
Mr. Shamlin, did you want to respond?
No, I was going to answer the question about the strategic plan. Dr. Narcisse, there's actually a call to reduce the number of high-risk incidences under the operational excellence pillar, so.
So, Dr. Narcisse, I want Captain Walker to speak about the new initiative that the sheriff's office and BRPD are working together to support having safe schools.
Not to alarm anybody about groups, and we don't like to use the term gangs, but we have sometimes neighborhood cliques that may begin in our schools. We're working closely with the GVI team, which is the group intervention, group violence intervention team. And what they do is they track the neighborhood groups, they monitor and keep up with members and new initiations and things like that. And they also provide some intervention between these groups and gangs. If you have two feuding groups that maybe get into some kind of feud, they try to intervene prior to any violence that may happen. So they go to schools, they go to homes, they go to wherever these kids may be, families may be, and provide the services they need to pull them out of the groups and give them any other services, whether it may be substance abuse programs, anger abuse, retention, anything that we can provide, this group provides that. So we try to work with that group to minimize the violence that we have, because a lot of the times, our community issues can bleed into the schools. And so we try to be aware of that prior to it happening, so we can prevent it.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Martin?
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful that we have somebody of the caliber of Captain Walker, you know, working with our SROs and working very hard to keep our students safe. Nevertheless, I'm a little concerned about this item, because as the superintendent kind of just alluded to, it's a great deal more to security than just law enforcement, right? There are training teachers, administrators to actually close the doors that are supposed to be closed at the schools. There's design of facilities, there's organization of all sorts of things. And I'm a little concerned that if we outsource that to, that position of chief of security to the sheriff's office, that that will kind of inherently lead, despite, I'm sure, the best of intentions of all involved, in having a purely law enforcement-focused approach to security without looking at broader environmental issues. And so that's why I'm, and I don't know that I'm right about that. There may be good answers to that, but that's one of the reasons I'm also concerned about, you know, I'm having to think through this all for the first time, having seen this pop on the agenda three days ago. That's my concern, Superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Shamlin? All right, Ms. Kennison?
Is the director of school security, that's traditionally a school employee and not? Not a police officer?
Spalding, want to give that response?
So in the past, it's been an employee, someone that came from academics. We had an employee prior to our last employee, so the last two employees have had law enforcement experience.
Did they have education experience, like?
No. But in security, we have the director who manages academic and reporting. Ms. Chaney can come and share with you the reports that she manages with students to make sure that we know which schools are hotspots and which schools that have issues. And then we have the director of law enforcement.
But what we're doing here is unprecedented, right? And, no?
No, it's not. Our last, our last director of security was from law enforcement, but he was retired.
But he was an employee, right? He's, we're talking about taking the...
So currently, Captain Walker is an employee of the district. He's a part-time employee. All of our SROs are part-time employees of the district.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any additional comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Well, before we move on, I just want to say, if our board president is watching, he's probably going to have something to share with me about the length of this meeting, but we will continue moving forward. Organizational items, announcements of meetings. Mr. Russ?
A board workshop is to be held on March 2nd from 4:00 to 5:00 PM at the Central Office Boardroom. The committee of the whole meeting is to be held on March 2nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. The regular board meeting is to be held March 16th, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom.
Thank you. Amen. Enjoy your evening.